We've got to get TV. We've got to get this going first. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. We're, it's September the 25th, and we're starting the Charlotte City Council meeting. We begin with introductions and being called to order. I will now ask our city attorney to begin with our introductions.
Good evening. Patrick Baker, city attorney.
Good evening. Dante Anderson, District One.
Tar Pecari, District Six.
Ed Driggs, District Seven.
Malcolm Graham, District Two.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Bye Lyles, Mayor.
Braxton Winston, Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening. Leona Slight Mayfield, Councilmember at large.
Good evening. Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to serve District Four.
Billy Tons, Deputy City Clerk.
All right. So at this point in our agenda, we are talking about those things that might be on our agenda in the future as well as those opportunities that we have to get various reports and information together. And so we'll start this evening's meeting by welcoming Kiva Walton and Monifa Draketon of the Mecklenburg County Alcohol Beverage Control Board, mostly known as ABC, to introduce themselves and to give us a presentation. And I just, we have another council member that just joined us. Introduce yourself, please.
Dimple Ashmira, Head Large. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Walton, thank you.
Well, good evening. My apologies for my hoarse voice, but thank you for the opportunity to be here. And our purpose is really quite simple, to introduce to some and to reintroduce to others, to others, the Mecklenburg County Alcoholic Control Board. And let me say that actually 76 years ago now, the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners and the voters approved what is known as an evergreen business, a business that is self-repunishing, self-funding, and meant to improve community. That business is Mecklenburg County ABC Board. And at its founding, there were some very specific parameters put in place on how that board would exist in this community. And a big part of that was investing dollars back into the community. Again, no tax dollars, completely self-funded from the revenues generated by the sales. And I think it's important to look at, in 75 years, that's what that investment looks like. And it continues to grow. A big part of that investment, as you can see, was when they, Mecklenburg, set it up, a percentage of the profits, because we can't keep profits by general statutes, and we have a threshold that we can't go above. And so an annual part of our budget is incentive, is investment in Mecklenburg County, City of Charlotte, Public Library, alcohol, education, and law enforcement. So there's nothing you can do about receiving a check. You're going to get one. It's in the budget. So that's what this looks like. And so when we talk about being community invested, that's what we mean. We put dollars behind this mission. And let's be clear. You know, we all might enjoy an adult beverage, but there are many among us who struggle with addiction, whether it be alcohol or, and I would encourage us all to pay very close attention to the fentanyl crisis, growing exponentially and quietly, but not so quietly. So a big part of our mission really is about alcohol education. So today, kind of three Cs I want to leave you with for us. The first is around community. And as you can see, our very construct was all about community. Alcohol is a very addictive substance. It's easy to forget that in a place like Charlotte, but we see the numbers. We see the casualties, and we saw a lot of it during the pandemic. But a big part of our effort and our mission is supporting community and making sure that alcohol education, treatment, and prevention is a priority. There we go. So a big part of it is we have an annual community granting process. In total, this year alone totaled $1.9 million. These grants you see before you, these are small grassroots organizations who are doing the work of substance misuse, education, treatment, and prevention on the ground where people are. That's important to know. And the other thing we did that's really significant this year is we added a fiscal agent component because we want these emerging organizations to be successful, not just in our grant, but in the grants beyond. So you can see, those are, those are the small grant awards. That's, those are some of the ones that are, and these are trusted names in our community that have been recipients of grants over the years and continue to do so. And then we have a few that are our larger grantees. Again, names you recognize, all doing, doing the work of substance misuse, education, treatment, prevention, and research. So that's a fundamental part of what we do. It's also important to remember, back in the 50s, Mecklenburg County ABC Board co-founded Anuvia. It used to be known as the Chemical Dependency Center. And we continue to make about a $3 million investment in Anuvia annually, in addition to these grants. A big part of community for us, and you saw law enforcement, is our engagement with the community. I have several members of our law enforcement team here, represented, holding down the back row. They carry guns, so I always bring them with me, just so you know. But you see a lot of young people in these photos. I can't express to you how important it is that we are constantly making our young people aware of the dangers and the challenges of substance misuse. During the pandemic, one of the research studies showed that young people, alcohol was the number one substance for misuse during the pandemic. This is sixth, eighth, and ninth graders. And so you will see our law enforcement, certainly they protect our property and protect our customers and our consumers, but more importantly, they spend time with our young people. That includes colleges such as Johnson &amp; Will and Johnson C. Smith University. So community is a very big part of who we are. The second piece really is around customer service. You know, my teammate over there, Vanetta Persell, our HR director, often says, "We are a retail business with government oversight." And like any business, the customer is king. And so we spend quite a bit of time, or have a bit, like everybody else. COVID was an opportunity to really relook at our business and how do we make it more customer-centric? Obviously, there are some pieces that we don't control in Raleigh, but we are able to influence as the largest board in the state. And we've made some moves, movement there on modernization. Proud to say that removing some of those requirements that make it easier for businesses, small businesses, to do business is key upon that. Internally, we're spending a lot of time on making product more accessible in a responsible way. Again, our granting, we've spent a lot of time, particularly around our mixed beverage. Those are all those hotels, bars, restaurants, neighborhood bars. How do we make their life easier? Because they are small businesses, and we want them and need them to be successful for a number of reasons. So constantly working on that front. This is probably one of your slides that I borrowed, and it's a little outdated. Because I'm proud to say that if you look at that food and beverage line, that's now 5.1 billion. The spirits industry clearly is an integral part of that hospitality tourism economy. I constantly say that to our team, whether it's a direct, indirect, or induced job, the work that comes around the spirits industry really helps drive so much of this economy. And so the work that we do, again, it's not just about this ABC Board, it's about this economy. Talking to Councilman Graham about the tennis tournament that we will have here in Charlotte, we're already thinking about that. How do we service that? We're looking at Cincinnati now, getting understanding of how that is serviced. We know that Rivergate is coming soon with lots of products and people, and our airport continues to grow. So we're constantly looking at the surrounding environment and how do we adapt to make sure that we are best serving our customers? So know that we're constantly watching the environment. For the customer and then the culture. Again, I'm proud to say we have a strong 320 and growing employees, full and part-time. We're constantly looking at the market. Proud to say that our salaries are above market for comparable retail operations. We do an annual scan of the environment and have that study done externally. Very competitive. We actually pay nonprofit volunteer hours. Really excited about tuition reimbursement, and our board voted, we know that student loan debt is huge. So our board voted to put in place a student loan repayment process for our full-time employees in good standing over a year. And I'm proud to say that the uptake on that has been pretty good and has been transformational for a number of folks. This year, we will add a success sharing plan. If it were private sector, we'd say profit sharing, but we don't have profits that make ABC. So it's based on incentive and goals that will be reached by each department. And again, we celebrate 75 years. And rather than putting those dollars into billboards and advertisement, we put those dollars back to our people. All sorts of wonderful enhancements that makes their work lives better. So we're working on building a culture that is desirable to be a part of. Again, it's retail. And lipstick on a pig, or whatever you call it, is still retail. And we want to do our best to take care of our people. So again, customer, community, and culture. I want to now turn it over to Dr. Wilhelmina Rembert, who is one of our board members, and she's going to bring words on behalf of the board. Dr. Rembert.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walton, and good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. I am delighted to be here this evening on behalf of our chairperson, Ms. Monifa Draketon. She is unable to be here today, but she sends her sincere regrets. She would certainly have been here, but she is out of town and could not be here today. So I am pleased to bring remarks or greetings on, on her behalf and on behalf of the other members of our board. One other member of our board is here. I'll ask Director Beverly Thorpe if she'll stand or be recognized. And I didn't see if any of our other board members came in yet. I don't think so. But on behalf of the entire board, we want you to know how important this partnership is with the city as it is with the county and with the public library, the funds that we have over and above what it takes to run the operation. We get to put back in the community, and we think that's of great value to our community. And so we are here, Director Thorpe and I are here to show our support to our CEO, Mr. Walton, who we believe is doing an exceptional job in running our ABC operation. You should and can be very proud of the work that he and his team are doing. I also would be remiss if I didn't bring greetings from Congressman Jeff Jackson's office, where your former colleague, former city councilman Larkin Eggleston is our district director. He sends his regards as well. So thank you so much for having us this evening.
Thank you.
So a lot in there. But, you know, again, I think Dr. Rembert summed it up well. We have a lot to be proud of in Charlotte Mecklenburg. And our task is to hold down our lane. And our lane is to make sure we are managing the sale and distribution of spirits in a lawful, legal, and responsible way. I can't stress that enough. Again, it's easy to say, lots of things you could say, but I can tell you every day the number of fake IDs that we receive. Parents, believe it or not, who bring their underage kids into the store and want to purchase for them.
I thought you meant back when we were in college that we had an underage ID.
It's taken on a whole new light now. So our law enforcement and our store associates do a wonderful job of that. And again, I'm wearing a button about ABC to go. And one of the outcomes of the pandemic, we didn't know if we'd end. So we entered the e-commerce space. And I'm proud to say, when and if Sunday Sales comes, which it will at some point, we will have our software developed such that you can order online and pick up hopefully in-store or curbside. Store 25 at Randolph currently is operational as well as Store 14 on Central Avenue. By the end of the year, we plan to have at least six, five, five more ready to go. So that concludes my comments. Again, thank you. Wanted to let you know what we're doing and that we believe in Charlotte Mecklenburg. So thank you. Oh, one, one last detail.
Just a small one.
So, you know, I mentioned we cannot keep profits. And so this is yours.
Thank you.
And I believe the check's already cleared and in the bank. So, you know, again, we have an annual amount that we budget every year specifically for this, and we can't keep profits over a certain threshold. So this $1.5 million is over and above what you received in fiscal year '23. So again, thank you. And I'll entertain any questions you might.
Well, Mr. Walton, thank you for your presentation. I, I would like to say that I think what you do in the stores has been just truly remarkable, the way that they've changed from being kind of like, you know, the red dot store to actually a place that's bright and has, you know, selections and choices. But I have to say to you, of the stores that I've been in, the staff has been tremendous.
Great.
They are, you know, things easier to pay, easier to find, all of that. So your customer service, at least in the respect that I've had, and I want to say this to the board members, it has really changed from what was the tradition. So I think that there are a few questions for you, and I'm going to start with Ms. Mayfield, followed by Ms. Anderson and Mr. Pecari. Ms. Mayfield. Well, we'll, we'll start with Ms. Mayfield and come around.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Walton, and for the board members who are in attendance. Couple of questions for you, and you may or may not have the answer to this. How do you decide which locations receive which products?
We are getting better at data analytics. How, in fact, what's being driven? What sale is being driven where? How much volume? Like any other retailer, looking at, and we're is being driven where, how much volume, like any other retailer, looking at, and we're getting better that we've invested significantly in our computing platform to better enable us to do that. But principally based on sales.
So, it's interesting that we use, that your current model is based on sales, because if the location closest to me doesn't have the product that I want and I have to go across town, the sales are going to be based off of that location. Or if I were to go online to do a search, so I'm going to be very specific. Jack Daniels now has a Tennessee honey.
Tennessee honey.
In a can form.
Yes, yes.
Myers Park is the only location that is one of the few locations in Charlotte that has that. If I live on, if the Wilkinson Boulevard location, the Brookshire location, the Mount Holly location, any one of those are the closest location to me, there's no way for me to go on to ABC's website to find this particular product. So that's why I was wondering how is it decided?
You're looking for the bottle or the cans?
It's a can.
The can.
I think you just got it on the shelf.
No, I had that on the lake this weekend, so that's why I'm asking.
You know, again, we're always looking. And again, what I would say to you, there are really probably very few products that we can't get. We do try to look at how sales are moving, because it moves. It's like an amoeba. It could be this way one month and the next different. So we will take a look, somebody over there is, Mike's got that down. We'll look at Jack Daniels honey in the can. Yes.
Oh, I'll send you the picture if you need it. So, yet, when we're talking about using technology, it might be helpful as people, not only those who currently live here, but as we're growing, we have a number of locations throughout the city. I'm on the website and did a Google search. It will be helpful to say in my area if there's a specific product, because I believe it was under really the North Carolina legislative statute that we can't receive certain drinks that come in from out of state. So again, I'm just going to speak for the I and all of my alcohol-related comments, questions. So after visiting Ireland a number of years ago, there was a very specific Irish drink that I could only get from Ireland because nobody sold it here. For many years, I was able to order it, and then that was changed where we no longer could get orders from it. But unfortunately, North Carolina doesn't have it. I had to go across state lines in order to find it. So I'm trying to also wonder if that's still going to be a concern, and if so, how do residents encourage you all of certain products and brands so that we're not going across the state line in order to identify purchases?
Well, and a lot of that has to do what's listed at the state level, and chances are we could get that by special order. So there really is no product we can't get. The question is if it isn't in stock in our system, across our system, we can probably get it through a special order if it's not listed by the state. The state hosts quarterly listing meetings for new products to get them on the list. So it's always changing every quarter.
So I'm going to tell you to add Cool Swan to whoever the magical person over there writing things down onto that list. But I think there is an opportunity if we're looking at our neighboring partners, what products they are having that we might not have. Because again, if I need to go across the line to state line or to Frugal, then that's sales that I'm not able to participate and utilize right here. So it might be an opportunity to see what is it that they're seeing that we don't have in our stores.
Absolutely. I would footnote that in our total system, including barrel picks, special orders, there are well over 4,000 SKUs. So it's, we'll get you.
Yeah, because I don't want a special order. I just want to be able to walk into the store and get what I want to get. But mainly, my little notes is, are we being, are we comparable to South Carolina with our offerings as well as our pricing?
I personally, and I'm biased, I think we exceed. It's easy to look at two or three stores and look at their product. Our store, our stores, our product is spread across 31 stores and 1,200 mixed beverage customers. So that's every bar, restaurant. And so it may be in the system, it may not be at that store, but chances are it's in the system. But I will say, or and I will say, one of the things that we want to get better at from our data and our computing platform is to be able to detect and be responsive to that demand. Because you're right, we want to make sure our residents are taken care of.
And in your slide for the Charlotte Mecklenburg hospitality tourism industry, what is you driving?
I'm sorry?
When you have in the hospitality tourism industry slide where we had the low bar, what is you driving?
That I do not know. That's a Mohamed Genetian slide. I grabbed it from HTA.
Okay.
I didn't create that, but that came directly from CRVA and HTA.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it sounds like we're, have some leaking sales for Frugal McDougall, so we need to make sure we're capturing. That check might be larger next year, based on Councilman Mayfield's desires. But I have two quick questions for you. First, I do want to say, I echo what the mayor said about the renovation of the stores being brighter, the customer service. You know, I've witnessed that in two stores that are in District One and adjacent to District One, and the user experience is much better. I also am, I want to thank you for being adaptive to how our environment is changing and being ready to embrace the change before it actually occurs. I think that's important, not only for the board, but across all entities for the city. We need to be more proactive versus reactive. But I have two questions. The first one is around social districts. And as you know, we are embarking on approving our first social district in the city. And because you are the board of the county, I know you're in conversation with Wake County and other counties that have social districts. Some of my residents have some concerns about safety and how that's being managed. I was just wondering, can you speak a little bit about your learnings from the existing social districts in the state?
It's still very sketchy, not a lot of learning as of yet. I was at a conference and I, it was in New York, and they talked about the whole nighttime economy. And I shared this with Mohamed, Tom, and Michael Smith. And the whole notion is how do you recognize that the nighttime economy is a significant brand point and economic point for your city. And so in New York, UK, they have these nighttime managers, and that function of a social district is being orchestrated through that entity. And New York, as you can imagine, tons of social districts. It really is mind-boggling. We have concerns about safety and enforcement, quite frankly, all around. So I have no other new learnings other than what I took from that conference. And I really, I shared with Tom, Mohamed, and I think I shared it with Chief Jennings also, because the police departments in these cities are very engaged in the orchestrating of these night districts. But we are continuing to watch and learn as well, and would appreciate the conversation back and forth. As we have a team of 16, very small law enforcement officers who work very closely with CNPD on these matters. So again, we want to continue to be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely. I think that partnership with your law enforcement officers and CNPD, as well as the entities that are looking to bring these social districts onboard, is the right type of collaboration that we need to ensure that it's successful and safe for the residents. The second thing I would like you to speak on is just the education piece around fake IDs and having adults purchase alcohol from minors. I know you all do a great job of community engagement and will come out to neighborhood association meetings, other meetings. Can you speak to that arm of your community engagement so everyone can understand how you are accessible for the ballots of council?
Yeah. And again, we are looking, as we speak, we've just brought on an additional staff resource, particularly in our community outreach education area. Our law enforcement team has stood up an entire unit within that division focused just on community engagement. So we are constantly, we were very engaged with, and we're looking to reengage with CMS for our stay program, so that we are constantly in the schools. I'm increasingly believing that we need to spend more time with parents, because I tell you, I heard a father talk about the loss of his 14-year-old son to fentanyl, and he thought his son had no issues. And so, you know, as we think about our next evolution, and we are at that point of determining next, and again, welcome the opportunity to have that conversation, because I'm feeling like we need to talk to parents and children. But yes, we are available, our folks, our law enforcement team, as I said, our CMS, we're in charter schools, we spend time over at Johnson C. Smith, as well as Johnson &amp; Wales. And, you know, our grantees are an important part of that, because they operate where people live, and they have a connectivity that maybe none of us has. And so those grants that go to those small grantees is critical. And I think that's going to be a way for us to reach deeper into the community.
I agree. Thank you for giving back to the community. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kivas, good to see you.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for all of your multiple roles and contributions to our city over the years. Appreciate seeing that up there and all the proactive stuff. I think we know that, especially when you look at commercial, commercial businesses suffering through the pandemic in a lot of ways, with their touch point to liquor and all the complexity statewide that comes along with that, sometimes there are issues that arise. And I just want to recognize you and your team for troubleshooting the constituent services aspect of that. We know issues arise, and you've helped in a number of those cases. Greatly appreciate it. And I just ask as we move forward for us to continue to make that a priority, particularly not just from the business needs, which I know you and your team fully are aware of and work on, but that intersectionality between the CNPD, ABC folks, the county, Parks and Rec, the county from a health and human services perspective, there's a lot of touch points, and there's a lot of ways things can fall between the cracks or be difficult. And I think there's an opportunity to build on what you've done here, like we have in the city with, you know, one-stop-shop views for development and things like that. So just a note to remember as we move forward, but a note of appreciation for you and your team as we work through tough, tough, time-sensitive items.
Thank you, sir. And again, I would encourage us to relook at that nighttime manager role and function. Again, UK, some of the largest cities had that function, and it really served as an umbrella and a hub for all that to coexist under, and it operated out of the mayor's office, I think, in most of those cities. So thank you for that.
We can do that somewhere else here, but that sounds great.
All right. I would like to recognize Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I will say I recently had a chance to work closely with Ms. Drakeon, and I know that she leads with integrity and excellence. So I know your board is in great hands. I do have a question about the prevention that you all provide help with. I wanted to hear more about that. You spoke to it a little bit when you talked about the community grants. But what tools are available to restaurant and bar owners to assist when patrons have had too much to drink?
Thank you for that. So our law enforcement team, we call it ASSET is the acronym, Alcohol Server Seller Excellence Training. I got it right, folks. ASSET is all about going into an establishment and educating every server on over-service and carting. So it can be done, and last year, we launched an online platform. So, because we realized it's often hard to get everybody in a restaurant at one time. So it's self-driven and, you know, it takes you through the, and I'd encourage you all to go take it for your own information. And there's a certificate at the end if you're successful. But we've seen a significant increase in the number of folks because of that, as well as the in-person. So our officers are always available to do that. How many this year have we done, Kevin?
Numbers-wise, we're in a couple hundred, sir.
Yeah. So that's always available. We are in the process of translating that into Spanish, always online. And, you know, we, our community engagement folks are looking for opportunities. So if you see opportunities out there, don't hesitate to give us a call and let us know. And again, I'd encourage you to know these grantees, because again, they're touching people where they live. And, you know, we remain open. And we can't forget Anuvia. They really do exceptional work there, have been since 1957 or so. And so that's a big part of the agenda as well. But more to come, because their need is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Watlington?
Thank you. I've just got a couple of quick questions. I'm particularly interested, you mentioned data analytics and how you all are kind of managing your inventory and things based on information from point of sale. I'm just curious where you think that is going, or what is the plan forward for how?
Yeah. Thank you for that question, because we actually just completed a market analysis with UNC Charlotte School of Business. And that very thick document will really help us better understand, two things we want to look at. What has changed since the pandemic? And what is anticipated over the course of the next five to six years? Now, we had to make significant investment in our computing platform to be able to do the data analytics and migrations to cloud and all those wonderful things. So we're just now coming up on the curve. So my plan is to really digest that program and really understand, and again, where is the city going? And again, we don't exist outside of the hospitality tourism economy. So, you know, how do we align those dots and begin to chart there? And that will drive so much. I do think a big part of next for us, you won't necessarily see the 6,000-square-foot store on three acres. I think we've got to look for new and inventive ways to enter the marketplace, as an example. Some, maybe a online-only store with the top 25 product that fills in where we have gaps. So we're looking, because as we know, the Chick-fil-A on Wendover, I think is, or, yeah, Wendover was, not Wendover, Randolph, great example of how retailers are shrinking their footprint. They're lessening the number of SKUs. SKU fatigue is what's coming out. So, you know, all of that's a factor now, and we're just beginning to digest that and understand that. We just got the results from the study last week. So I'd be happy to come back and, once we get a plan, and actually share with you where we're going, because I think that's important for the hospitality tourism economy.
Sure. Yep. I'd be very interested in kind of what your go-to-market strategy looks like and what you're like, direct-to-consumer sales pipeline may look like. I'm sure for alcoholic beverages, you can't necessarily do a vending machine or something autonomous, but I'd be very curious.
Artificial intelligence is amazing. I just have to say that.
Very interesting. The other question that I had is from a supply chain standpoint, how, and you may have already covered it or alluded to a little bit, but I'm curious as to how do smaller retailers, small business, particularly minority business retailers, or wholesalers, rather, get into your pipeline? Are there programs to help support that? Or are you only dealing with kind of the larger brands?
Yeah. Again, I mentioned earlier the state listing system, that all, any product in the state of North Carolina goes through the North Carolina ABC Commission for listing. And that's the process that they go through. Now, I'm not an expert on the length of time or how difficult that is to navigate, but surely there's opportunity there to strengthen that. And we've had some local successes who are diverse-owned, and I'm proud to say are in our stores. And we want to see more of that. Certainly, well, I'm supposed to be brand agnostic, so I... And we want to see more of that, certainly, well, I'm supposed to be brand agnostic, so I, but maybe you know some of them that are doing it. But there's opportunity for us certainly to do more of that. And again, I will say to you, we will probably come back to you in time, because again, we're talking about modernization. As the largest board in the state, I think we have a bit of a responsibility to challenge the status quo a little bit. And so, stay tuned.
Certainly. Thank you for that. I definitely think there's a play there, though you're brand agnostic, as I've learned.
Trying to be.
Yeah, there's certainly a play there from a tourism and hospitality standpoint of how do we play up our local brands, and how do we create a consumer experience that drives folks to the Charlotte brands in particular? And then my last question is, I know that the ABC Commission is tasked with the licensing and whatnot. I'm just curious, though, what role do you all play, given that you're in the community and you understand where some of the issues are and things like that? We've had a couple where we've worked, yeah. Yeah. I know you know what I'm talking about. Can you talk a little bit more about the role that the ABC Commission locally play, or excuse me, the ABC Board plays in trying to manage or curb some of that concentration of alcohol outlets, even if they're not ABC stores in particular?
Yeah, you know, the process that the city has for assessing and checking the box, is this a good establishment? That's really the most local control. We can provide input, but we're not directly in that process. And I know it may seem slow, perhaps for our permittee, but that's part of the reason, so that CMPD, ABC can go out and do an inspection, planning can do an inspection, and to make sure that if this is not a good location for an outlet, that it doesn't become one. And again, I know that sounds a little arduous to a business owner who wants it, but at present, that's the process. And I think it's really important, again, from you all's standpoint, that CMPD and planning and all your entities that are involved, and again, you just go to South End, you see the explosion that exists there. It's a lot of effort, and your folks do a really good job of doing that. Again, to a business owner, I know it may seem a little slow, but there's a reason. There's a very intentional reason to that. And I would say, lastly, it's important, imagine if there were privatized sales, and what would happen to those hotspots, those C-stores that have been troublesome to the city for decades? And, you know, I'm biased, obviously, but, I mean, that's a very real community challenge, particularly in some neighborhoods more than others. Yeah, I know you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question. Kiva, I want to thank you for your leadership on a wide variety of fronts in the city, and our personal relationship goes without saying so. Really appreciate the job that you're doing. It's really a quick question for the manager. Mr. Manager, I keep seeing that $1.5 million. I've already spent it like 10 times in my mind. So tell me, where does the money go in the budget? How is it utilized, and how are we tracking it?
Sure. It's not allocated specifically in the budget, so when you start to think about that additional $1.5 million, like some of the items dealing with public safety, they would be able to support that. So we are very thankful for, I thought it was, you know, $2.5 million, I think I lost a million somewhere.
No, he started out at 10.
No, that's, that's how we use it.
All right. Mr. Graham, any other questions? All right, Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you go last, majority of my questions have been addressed, and I agree with my colleagues about the great work that you and your board is doing, appreciated. In fact, I had an opportunity to attend one of the events that you all had at the Queens University that Anuvia was hosting, and I, I think we absolutely need more presence on college campuses. So if you could just elaborate on the kind of work we are doing on college campuses, you know, when, and how are we addressing some of the struggles that you mentioned early on in the presentation, especially when we are talking about young adults?
Opportunity, I'm sorry.
If you can just speak to that.
Certainly an opportunity for growth. A lot of our focus has been in grade school. I'm proud to say that we, our law enforcement division established a paid scholarship for criminal justice person from Johnson C. Smith. We don't have physical space to house him, so hopefully, when we get complete, when our renovation, we'll do that. A number of our officers are on campuses. We have a couple who are professors, adjunct professors at Smith, and building that relationship is the first thing. We also offer, I believe, I'm going to call it drunk driving, but it's, there's something else. They put on the goggles and you navigate a vehicle and.
Simulator.
Yeah, yeah. So that's something our law enforcement folks are also out doing, particularly at Johnson and Wales, and we're always looking for new opportunities. Principally, we've been at Johnson and Wales and Johnson C. Smith. Our staff is only 16, so there's only so much we can do. But how do we leverage relationship and partnership to do more? Because, and again, the online asset, as I'm talking, that may, I know it's for servers, but that may also be of value to those college-age drinkers to know, you know, when you've had too much and when you have to drive. So that may be something we push out online. New idea, guys, all right?
So I'd be interested, because I was going through some of your grantees, and many of them we recognize, but, you know, I don't see any specifically targeted towards college campuses, especially our young adults, as they are just have a license to now drink. I think it's an important, it's very important that we do target that group.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I see that you have about $3.4 million distributed towards law enforcement. I wasn't sure, because I haven't seen a lot of these checkpoints, drinking and drink-and-drive, right, where I had seen that in other college, near-college campuses. I would be interested to hear your vision as to how we can really address that drink-and-drive culture.
Yeah. Again, partnership is key. Our relationship with CMPD, we cannot do what we do without that relationship. We have a tremendous partnership. But again, just listening here, I think leveraging our asset, our online asset platform more in colleges, I think out of this conversation comes the idea of how do we do more? Because again, we're looking, how do we look in with what's already there?
Especially when you have a location that is so close to the college campuses, where I've seen college students go, you know, how can we leverage that location to do a targeted outreach to college students and work with law enforcement? This $3.4 million, is that going specifically towards addressing drinking and driving?
It's all-inclusive. That would include our law enforcement team, the whole investment of law enforcement, as well as the outreach part that comes with it.
Got it. Well, I appreciate your presentation, certainly very resourceful.
Thank you.
You know, I would like to see how, to Mr. Graham's point, how do we leverage some of this dollars that we are receiving to address some of the gaps that we might have in law enforcement, and really using that towards public safety? So, thank you.
We'll be thinking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Kiva.
As well.
So going back to social, I have two questions and a comment. Going back to the social districts topic, one of the kind of rationales for creating this on the state level was the idea that this would increase revenue. Do you have any data, this, I guess, obviously, we're still working on our first one, but there have our social districts around North Carolina. Is there any data showing social districts and the economic impact that exists?
I get a weekly brief from our national association, and I haven't, it's still early. I haven't seen anything discreet, you know, that would give you something real substantive. I will be on the lookout for that, because typically, that's a brief that covers all 17 of the control states. But I have not seen, Mike, are you aware of anything, anyone, that's come out as of yet? But that's something we will be on the lookout for, because I get that brief daily, and I can ask our national office, you know, what are you seeing on social districts?
So there's no data right now that, that.
No, nothing meaningful, nothing meaningful that would help you, that I can see, but I'll continue to look.
Thank you. So I've heard anecdotally that younger adults aren't drinking as much as previous generations. Do you have any data around this to show that, whether that's true or false?
COVID would tell us that would be not true. Anuvia did a study in 20, is a youth study, in 2021, thereabouts. And as I said, alcohol was the number-one substance misused by sixth, eighth, ninth, and 10th graders, principally because of ease of access at home. And, you know, now we've got to contend with experimentation is no longer an option. You know, young people.
But is there any data that shows comparatively if that is, that as an aggregate is increasing from previous generations or decreasing?
I will go back to Anuvia. What I'm citing is coming from COVID times. So now that we're out of COVID, it would be interesting to see if that holds true. And, you know, again, back to your questions, and thank you for this, because this is one of the things I want us to be deeper in, is the research end of that. You know, I'd love for us to be able to report, here's where we are as a city, as a county, relative to substance misuse, and here are the gaps. Anuvia is our leading indicator there, and I will, I'll reach out to Valerie Kapetsky and see what data we can get, and I'll forward that over.
Thank you. And the last thing, as I've been listening and taking a look through, this has to do with transportation. This is my comment. Feel free to respond if you feel so moved. Transportation is, especially in this city and North Carolina, is directly correlated with alcohol consumption. A lot of places you have to drive to to go drink, and vice versa. A safer city means a city where alcohol and personal vehicles aren't connected, aren't as connected. This shouldn't, nor does it have to, be connected to law enforcement. I hope you can find ways to invest in the community, ways that helps people move around, and do that more safely after consuming the products that you regulate. I don't see any direct investment in these community investments in transportation. When we look at drunk driving, accidents, vehicular deaths, vehicular violence, we look at the way we're kind of, community is set up, seems like there's an opportunity there to deal with the problem before it becomes a problem. I'd love for you guys to look into finding ways, more direct ways to invest in that.
We'll certainly look at it. Again, our focus has principally been on the person, the individual, and choice and awareness. But you introduced an interesting perspective. So something to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, well, if people aren't driving to go drink and aren't drinking after they're driving, I think that is certainly dealing with the person.
Well, and, you know, maybe one of the biggest parts is just awareness, you know, there's always, what we, people don't, you know, the old, you got to repeat something multiple times for people to hear it. And, yeah, he's got the check. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we turn it with all of the council members, and we want to say, again, your board. Of directors that have attended and are participating. Mr. Walton, thank you for the work that you're doing. All right? Thank you. Now I'd like to recognize Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Anderson and I would be remiss if we didn't recognize the beautiful women in the crimson and cream that are here visiting with us today. If you could please stand. Today kicks off our Delta Days in the City, hosted by our Charlotte Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. It's a week-long series of social action activities, which is culminated in our Delta Days in the City this Saturday. To learn more about that and how you can get involved and be a part of the work of Delta Sigma Theta of improving our community, you can visit DSTCLTAlumni on Instagram, or certainly feel free to connect with any number of the dynamic women in the room. But we thank you and we honor you for your service, and we appreciate you being here today, my sweet, sweet sororess.
Thank you. Please, please feel free to stay as long as you would like, and we can make it very long, believe me. So, here we are. The next item on our agenda is the consent questions. Ms. Harris has some of those, and I believe you have the handout that addresses two items that are on the business agenda. And so with that, I'm going to, and some material behind it around the issues, items 15 and item 17. Are there any other questions for the consent agenda? Are there any items that someone would like to have a speak to, or any specific item that you'd like to speak with or speak to? If hearing no one, then may I have a motion? I'm sorry. What did you say?
Listen, approve, along.
All right. We have a motion.
That was cute. I'm pulling 20.
All right, so Ms., all right, let me start again. I'm trying to figure this out. We have a motion on the floor for items 19 through 20. Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the items? All right, hearing?
I was pulling for number 20, so do you want me to ask my question?
Go ahead and address about, I think that would be appropriate, since we have a motion on the floor that you address item 20, Mr. Mayfield.
Mayor, item 20 is to vendor change for the previous approved purchase of specialized equipment truck. This was the approved the purchase, action A, approved the purchase of a custom police command bomb truck for cooperative contract. B, approved a uniprice contract with Emergency Vehicle, Inc. for the purchase of a customized police bomb truck and related equipment for a term of two years. C, authorized the city manager to extend the contract for additional terms. Back in July of 2023, council approved, I believe, and I can ask the clerk later to check in a minute, that I was not in support of us moving forward with this particular purchase. But what we have in front of us today is a change in the vendors due to, what we have in here is a change to the vendors is being requested due to the fact that the Emergency Vehicles, Inc. was unable to commit to better pricing and is able to meet the delivery schedule needed to comply. So this is a request for us to approve changing the vendors. We have in here noted, CMPD has received over 300 bomb squad service calls, and the bomb truck has been deployed to over 80 of the calls. The current, city's current bomb truck has reached the end of its life cycle and needs to be replaced. The current truck is over 20 years old and has multiple mission critical items that are broken or unserviceable. It's actually a two-part question, and hopefully, we have the staff here that can answer. One of the questions is in direct inquiry to the current bomb truck that has passed its life cycle, and that question is, historically, we have a number of surplus items, including surplus gum, guns, and other things related to CMPD. So what is the plan for the current truck that we have? Is this something that is going to be recycled? Is this something that's going to be resold through our surplus? What's the plan for this current vehicle?
So, and I will follow up with CMPD to get you the specifics, but no, this wouldn't be available to the general public unless the tactical pieces are taken off, and it's more armored vehicle-type things would be, had to be downgraded before we'd ever have this available to the public. But we'll follow up and get you exactly what's going to happen to it.
So thank you, Maria, and I apologize for not sending this question to you earlier, because you did answer the other questions for me, not really for general public. I want to make sure. I want to make sure that this isn't sold to another smaller department if we've identified, because they might be a much smaller police department that might not have access financially to the resources that we have. But if this is a vehicle that we've already identified, has exceeded its life cycle, just like with a used car. I could still go buy a used car from late ninety-nine, early two thousands today. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's a good idea for me to do at this point unless I'm a mechanic and can do repairs. I want to make sure that we know clearly what's going to happen as far as this vehicle being decommissioned and not be something, not to the general public, but it also shouldn't make its way to another.
Yes, ma'am, we'll get you that. And if it would, it'd be more so something for training purposes typically, and they wouldn't be in service, but we'll get you the specifics around.
That would be extremely helpful, even though we're having this conversation for this evening and also trying to have a better understanding why. I have a challenge with us just identifying a new vendor for this without having the additional language, whereas most often we would have vendor, a little bit more vendor information that we're moving forward with just saying, well, the current, the vendor that we chose back in July of 2023, they weren't able to do the work. So we went out and found another vendor that potentially can complete the work.
So just to clarify, both these vendors were under the same cooperative agreement that was already bid out, and they both had contracts. The original one when we were negotiating with, they were coming in higher than we have, so the original estimate we gave you was a million dollars.
Right.
They were coming in a little bit above a million, but, I mean, we had estimate, but then also they, just based on how things are going with availability of materials and things like that, they weren't able to produce it and get, they were, but not within the timeframe, within federal dollars, we had to spend it within a certain timeframe. So that was the main knockout factor. They couldn't produce it in time for us to use these grant funds on it, whereas the other vendor came in a little lower and guaranteed to meet the delivery time cycle required.
Thank you for explaining that, and also it's noted in here that the vehicle will be a regional asset that will serve not just the city of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County, but also the other ten counties within the urban area security initiative within the region.
Yes, ma'am.
So with this. With this approval, we're saying the expenditure, the anticipated expenditures to be about that million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
How much of that million is coming from our regional partners that also will benefit from this? Because I need us to not be in a place where Charlotte is the one that's expected to be all things for all people. So we need to have financial contributions from our partners that also will be utilizing our services.
So I, I definitely understand what you're saying, but for this particular asset, it's federal grant, and we're the, I forgot the proper term, but, you know, we're the capital of the Uwase County, so we administer the grant funds on behalf of the region. So it's, we're not paying for it, and they're not paying for it. The federal government's giving it to us and paying for it, but we're also deploying it as needed throughout the region.
That is helpful because what we have on here that I'm reading is the funding is general grants fund. So I didn't read that as to be federal general grants.
Yes, ma'am, it's federal.
So I'm still going to be a no for the simple fact that it is for the type of the equipment, but I needed to get clarification on what exactly, where's the funding coming from, how we making sure that this original vehicle is being decommissioned? And without having that information now, it will be very difficult for me to move forward because the last thing we need is something out there that can cause damage.
So we have a motion on the floor for consent items nineteen through thirty-one. All in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? And we have one in opposition. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is a review. I'm not quite sure if we have time for both of these items, Mr. Jones. Do you think we can do both of them? We've got about twenty minutes?
Uh, no, Mayor. So what, what I would suggest is that the Quality of Life Team presentation is necessary to have tonight because there is going to be a recommendation for future ordinance changes. And in terms of the social districts, I could even, either do it during the, well, you also have a closed session.
We do have a closed session that I don't think Mr. Baker has said would be a very short term. So I know we can do the closed session in the fifteen minutes, right? But I didn't know which one.
So, so I would suggest, Mayor.
That means you wouldn't have to come back after we adjourn.
So I would say with the social districts and Great Liz is in the room, and so is Debbie, we were just trying to bring you an update. I think there were eight pre-applications, and we have one application that's actually in right now, and that's, that's the gist of the, the update. So let's check that. And so right now, we have the Quality of Life Team for you and one closed session item. So I would like to move forward with the Quality of Life Team.
Okay, we're going to do that upstairs, downstairs? Should we do the closed session now, Mr. Baker? Would that allow us the time to do that? I'm sorry, I heard some tones, but I'm not really quite sure what.
So Mayor, I, I would like the Quality of Life Team to, to go now.
Oh, I thought you meant when we went downstairs to go now at your manager's briefing.
That was the social districts was I took care of.
Sorry. All right, it's Quality of Life. Let's see it.
Mayor, I have a quick.
Let's have some Quality of Life. Yes, I have Mr. Bakari, yes.
It's, if we don't have time, that's okay, but I want to make sure we're moving aggressively on the social district stuff if things are in our, our shop here, not waiting on others to apply. Is that the punchline?
Yes.
Great.
So I have a clarifying question for the manager.
I have Ms. Edmira first. Ms. Edmira, you didn't have, okay. All right, Ms. Mayfield?
Manager, I need clarification on what you were saying as far as the social districts. We're saying right now we're going to go over the Quality of Life Team. What were you recommending regarding this presentation?
For the social districts, it was just really giving you an update of where we are. I think Councilmember Bakari captured it well. It's not that the city is sitting on anything, but if you would like to have that during the manager's report, because it seems like there's a lot of questions around social districts, I'd like to put it on the manager's report.
Thank you, because we have received quite a few emails, and we also want to make sure that we're all on, at least in the same book, even though we would not necessarily be on the same page with social districts, but there have been quite a few emails and conversations from the community regarding impact. So I would like for us not to rush through or brush over it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Debbie, are you, I'm sorry, are you coming up to begin the team presentation? I believe Mr. Jones is going to introduce us.
Sure, so I, I'll give you an abbreviated version. So one of the things that we're, we're trying to do as we set up the conversation tonight for the Quality of Life Team, we don't want you to think about this as a one-off, and this is one thing that we're doing, because you may think about it and say, well, you hired four people, and we have a lot more things that are happening in the city. So we always try to frame this around safe Charlotte. And if you will recall, this goes back to June of 2020, where we had every single committee go through what could happen as it relates to those committees in terms of making sure we have a safe city. So some of the outcomes of that is reimagining policing with their civilian response teams, the alternatives to violence, the hospital-based violence prevention program, and a lot of the collaborative work that's happening in the corridors. So if you would just look at tonight's presentation as something that's additive to everything else that's going on, as we went through this last budget development cycle, we talked a lot about quality of life, we talked about illegal parking, we talked about trash, and this is just an update to show this collaboration that we're trying to address some of the concerns that came out of the last budget cycle. So Debbie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'm so excited to introduce our team. And so once again, I'm Debbie Smith, as service your Transportation Director, and I've been with the city for twenty-four years, going on, going on twenty-four years, and I can truly say that we have the best people at the city who are so passionate about this work and are great public servants. And so with that, let me introduce some of those great employees that we have. So Tamara Blue, she serves as our Public Relations and Communication Manager within Transportation. We also have Rebecca Hefner, Deputy Director of Housing and Neighborhood Services, and Lisa Flowers from our Attorney's Office. So Tamara's going to really briefly introduce you to the Quality of Life Team and our immediate focus areas. Spoiler alert, Mr. Jones shared those with you. Wonderful, thank you. Rebecca's going to share some of the work that code enforcement is doing in these areas and give you an implementation update. And then Lisa's really going to start to tee up this, this idea of ordinance update recommendations that we believe are going to really help move the needle around enforcement strategies. But what a beautiful way with my superstar lineup to demonstrate for you what we're doing across department lines. We're weaving this together, and we're looking at immediate gains, but we really have our eye on the prize of long-term strategies. And so with that, it's everyone from executive leadership down to our subject matter experts. And I do want to say that we've got several members of our Quality of Life Team in the audience over here as well. And so it is just a beautiful partnership, beautiful collaboration. So with that, Tamara.
Thank you, Debbie. Good evening. It's good to see you all this evening. What is the Quality of Life Team? So the Quality of Life Team's purpose is to identify and share issues repeatedly brought to the attention of staff and city council. The team pools its knowledge and expertise from specific areas to assess current issues and needs of the community from a holistic approach. Strategies may be short or long-term, but the goal is to affect positive change. This team first convened nine months ago and has discussed in great detail issues like litter, illegal parking, commercial truck parking. That is an issue that has risen to the top for many of our residents. Illegal parking is a vehicle blocking ADA access, crosswalks, train tracks, loading zones, and crosswalks, to name a few. The team conducted peer city research to learn how others are managing this national issue. We learned that Greensboro, Raleigh, and Greenville had all recently and were in the process of updating ordinances to help address illegal parking activities. We spent time talking with local multi-facilities truck parking owners and a truck parking enforcement company. We also talked with the president and CEO of the North Carolina Truckers Association about truckers' challenges and the lack of safe and reliable truck parking throughout the state. We are working to access improved technology to make it easier and safer to cite while collecting data that can help us better manage the concerns, further our education efforts, and potentially identify new partnerships. We are already implementing some strategies and will roll out more over the coming months. We've identified the need to update some of our ordinance language to include infrastructure items that didn't exist when they were originally written or last amended. A healthy sign of a growing city. We know that education is important and is the foundation to affecting positive change. We will keep in motion this cycle of communicating with our peer cities, keeping up with industry best practices, and identify potential solutions while putting our boots to the ground to manage issues, and most importantly, to continue to educate ourselves and the public. Next, I would like to turn it over to Rebecca Hefner to share code enforcement's essential role on this team. Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. Tonight, I'm going to do my best Jane Talon impression. Unfortunately, Jane could not be here this evening, but she and her team are doing a fantastic job with this work, and I hope that I will represent them well. Now, Jane Talon's a little bit more hard-nosed than me. I tend to be kind of excitable, but I'll do my best to give it to you straight tonight. Y'all ready? Code enforcement, love us or hate us, it really depends on whether we're responding to your concerns or telling you something that you can't do. Either way, code enforcement plays an important role in enhancing quality of life in our community. But enforcement is really just one part of what we do. Education, partnership, problem solving, these are also part of our code team's daily activities. I guess that would make it too long of a name, so we just stick with code enforcement. Our staff are out in the community every day, proactively working with residents and business owners to address violations before they come, become complaints, and to try to solve problems before they become safety concerns. Our code enforcement division investigates more than fifty thousand properties each year. Many of these concerns that we hear about involve more than just code issues. So think for a minute about a busy intersection in Charlotte. We might get a complaint about this intersection, and we go out and there's illegal signage, there might be a business zoning violation, but also litter, a damaged guard rail on a state road, and vegetation blocking street signs, all of these things. And this requires a coordinated response from multiple departments, properties, owners, partner agencies, and even community volunteers. This new code team structure we're going to share with you tonight, the Rapid Response Team, helps us respond in a more coordinated way to resolve some of these really more complex issues. The new code team is an investment that you all made through the FY 2024 budget. So thank you for helping us take this step towards better addressing quality of life in Charlotte. Currently, our code enforcement division operates from eight to five, Monday through Friday, and with the addition of these four positions, we'll be able to cover some extended hours on some weekdays and some weekend hours. And this is especially important as we're working to address tractor-trailer parking across the community, as this is a particular challenge, really, especially on the weekends. I know that you all have gotten a lot of emails on the weekends about it because you have then forwarded them to us. So we're, we're, we know this is a busy thing on Saturdays and Sundays. This team will allow code to put additional resources into these current quality of life concerns, but what, what we're really excited about is that we're creating a flexible structure on this team that will allow us to more quickly respond to emerging issues in the future. So we wanted to share a quick implementation update. We're currently in the process of hiring for this new team, but some of the work has already begun. For example, education is an ongoing activity. We receive calls daily about vehicles that are blocking bike lanes, crosswalks, accessibility ramps, loading zones, and more recently, we're hearing about it on street car tracks and light rail rights of way. Our staff have been distributing windshield cards to educate drivers about these violations. You can see an example of that card here on the screen. We've also moved really swiftly to increase enforcement of illegally parked tractor-trailers. In June, you adopted a budget that included this new team. In July, the manager gave code enforcement authority to enforce specific parts of the parking ordinance in chapter fourteen. And in August, code began issuing citations in several of the city's truck parking hotspots. So even while we're recruiting and hiring, we've also gotten straight to work. We know this is an urgent concern in our community. Some of these hotspots include locations in the university area, the I-8545 corridor, West Sugar Creek-Davis Lake area, parts of the Albemarle Road corridor, 521 Providence Road West. If you're not hearing your specific hotspot, I didn't list every single one, so be in touch with Jane, and we'll let you know where we're working right now. In addition, we're working through a variety of process and technology enhancements that will make our work more efficient and more coordinated. More importantly, it will make our work more scalable citywide, because again, this is an additional four positions, and it's a large city with a lot of, of these concerns. This slide illustrates the future state of what we see as the Rapid Response Team, and we wanted to share this with you because it's more than the addition of, of a code team. Once our staff are onboard, each team member will serve as a liaison to one of our partner departments, in some cases even participating in their team meetings in addition to their field activities. And the goal here is really to create a more streamlined response to some of these challenging quality of life concerns through more coordination at the staff level and more integration of processes and technology. So the Quality of Life Concerns Team that Tamara talked to you about, they will continue to serve as the strategic driver of this work, identifying proactive solutions, and the Rapid Response Team will act to coordinate those response activities on the ground throughout the community. So we'll have those two parts. So we'll have those two parts working together. And I wanted to share two quick successes from this diagram that, given the timing, I will go through extraordinarily quickly, but two of them that we're seeing some good traction initially are around litter, debris, and neglect, and tractor-trailer parking. So on litter, we have a partnership here on the screen with Solid Waste, Code, Housing and Neighborhood Services, and Keep Charlotte Beautiful. And around parking, we have a great partnership with C. Dot Code and CMPD. This slide highlights some of the great work that's going on around litter, trash, and debris. We're really making progress on some of these strategies. In addition to the new code team, you also invested PEGO funding in the FY 24 budget to establish a third litter crew within Solid Waste Services. And then you should be receiving a monthly update from Keep Charlotte Beautiful that's also sharing all about the accomplishments of this small but mighty team. We have representation here in the room. So some of the things that they're doing are here on the slide. You can read them in your updates, but I do just want to shout out a record-breaking year that we've just concluded with over 9,500 volunteer hours picking up nearly 5,000 bags of litter throughout Charlotte. There's 430-plus active participants in that program. So really fantastic work to that team. Lastly, commercial truck parking. This is the one that started it all, right? The issue that got us all going. So I know you heard a little bit about this from Tamara. I'm going to move through this quickly in the interest of time, but one of the things that we have heard over and over again is that there just isn't enough truck parking in our community. This is truck drivers who are driving through town because we have a demand for goods here in Charlotte, and it's also truck drivers who live in our community. So truck drivers who can't go home to their driveways and neighborhoods and community parking lots the way that many of us do at the end of the night. And what we've heard from truck drivers and owner-operators is that a parking violation in the city of Charlotte is a cost of doing business. So there's a $25 citation, and CMPD has been enforcing these violations, and now code will be participating in enforcing these violations. But we've heard from our partners and our peer cities that many cities are updating ordinance language to have a better opportunity to manage this issue. So I'm going to pass it off to Lisa Flowers to share some of the potential ordinance updates with you.
Thanks, Rebecca. So in the interest of time, the team's asked me not to go line by line through Chapter 14 to give you all the updates, but basically, as we... Let's see. Can you move this up? Nope. Okay, thanks. So as we looked at what was included in Chapter 14, we found some areas that we could make some clarifications and some terms that either weren't defined or weren't defined consistently with how those terms were defined elsewhere. So it made sense for a lot of terms to make them align with the state statutes. So for example, bicycle and public bicycle path, we're just citing to the state statute. So then if the state statute changes, our ordinance doesn't need to change. But there's an exception when it comes to commercial vehicles. Currently, Chapter 14 defines commercial vehicles, it uses the state definition, which is based solely on weight. We're proposing that we align our definition with what's in the UDO, which uses weight, but more importantly, size, and that will make enforcement consistent with how code enforcement currently operates. Then we're also proposing adding some new provisions that will make... There'll be new provisions of illegal parking. So things like we're making a separate item for parking outside the lines on the light rail line, EV parking, if you illegally park without being an EV, or even if you are an EV but you're not plugged into the EV spot. And then finally, parking in a bike lane, which has been a longstanding request from the Bicycle Advisory Committee. We're also proposing adding some new... Finally, we're proposing adding to the list of parking violations that are subject to a $100 fine. Currently, most illegal parking receives a $25 civil penalty. There are a few that receive a $100 penalty. These are things like blocking the curb ramp, parking illegally in an accessible space, or blocking a fire lane, blocking a fire hydrant. We're considering... We're asking to consider adding things that you see represented in some of these pictures. So if you look at the top left, that's blocking the box. So if you're not familiar, if the vehicle pulls into the intersection, should not pull into the intersection or crosswalk unless there's enough room for the vehicle on the other side of the intersection, even if it's a green light. Parking in a bike lane there in the middle. Over on the right, parking on the sidewalk. If you move down... I'm sorry, that one's parking on the light rail line. And then down is parking on the sidewalk. EV parking, and then provisions of the commercial truck parking to raise those to $100. And these are things that are violations that cause either safety or operational concerns. And then... So basically, everything... There won't be any increase in the parking... Most parking violations, you won't have an increased fine except for these. However, we also added a provision that makes each hour, if you're parked in a time-restricted or metered parking spot, each hour is another civil penalty. So that alleviates... We have people that'll get a ticket and they'll just keep their car there, so they've just paid $25 for parking all day. So this will hopefully deter that. And I'm going to turn it back over to Debbie to tell you what's next.
So very quickly to wrap up, I know Lisa flew through that at lightning speed. There will be another opportunity for us to give you more detailed information on those ordinance updates. We really wanted to just tee that up for you. So in the coming month, you would see that again as an opportunity, line by line, to be able to just understand what we're doing there, so within the next month. And once again, you know, next steps, we want to continue the rollout of code's new team, and we're doing some technology and process updates that relate to code's new team. And there's this ongoing partnership that we have with NCDOT and other partner agencies. And so quickly going through the next steps, only for time. I know we're wrapping up, but I want to make sure and leave plenty of time for discussion. So with that, opening it up.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Debbie, for ending on this point. I think the question is, we have about 70 or 75 to 100 people in the chamber, and it's past the time for the meeting to start. The question I have, would you like to take 30 minutes upstairs or go down and have the meeting and have the discussion at some point after we finish the agenda on this item, which I don't think that these ladies probably knew, that we probably asked them to stay longer? But I think the question is up to you. When do you want to discuss this? Because we do have people waiting for us downstairs. Is there a preference from the group?
Could we follow up offline, perhaps, with staff on this?
No.
No. Well, yes, you could, but other people may not choose that option. But there's always going to be the option to follow up. I mean, it doesn't have to be that everybody follows up the same way, but it's really...
So it is not like we're having it next week. We just wanted to put this out in front of you because there are some significant changes that we'll ask you this fall. Yes.
Right, but I think it's a structure of change, and so right now, I'm just asking you, do you want to stay upstairs and take the time, or do you want to go downstairs and start the meeting and do it after the meeting? That's all I'm really asking. So if those... You would like to do it now?
Downstairs, downstairs.
All right. Wait.
Well, after the meeting is like 10 o'clock, 9:00, 9:30, 10:00. No one's... I meant, it's front of us right now, and we've been talking about this since February of this year. So this is, you know, an opportunity time for us to dive in on some of these issues that I think are extremely important, even more important than the social districts.
I agree. From my perspective. I agree, Councilmember Graham.
Yes, there are 75 people or so in the chamber. You know that you've got some things on this agenda that are important to some of the neighborhoods. We also have a number of proclamations as well as introductions to be made. So really, all I'm asking for is... And this is always a struggle for me, because we can go and then be later, but I thought it would be good to ask you what you want to do instead of just a decision, because then we run and rush. So all of you that would like to stay upstairs and continue this discussion for the next 30 minutes or so, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four. All right, all of you that would like to go downstairs, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four. That's a joy. Such a joyous thing to do, so...
So Madam Mayor...
We are going to have a manager's report, so we can do some of this during the manager's report, which is earlier than night. That's what the whole thing would be, a discussion like this, it'd just be at the dais downstairs. Great. All right, so we're going to go downstairs and get started, and during the manager's report, we'll go through Quality of Life in Social Districts.
Considering that in that year, the Commerce Latino Americano of Charlotte, the Consejal de Liderazco Latino, the Association Nacional de Profesionales de la Propiedad Raíz and the Coalition Latino Americano have united in the celebration in the Center of Government. Considering that the Comité de Fiesta Patrias y Tradiciones of Charlotte, Fiesta Patrias, are commemorating the National Year of Honor of the Spanish Heritage in the Museo Mint for the ninth year consecutive in Charlotte. Considering that, according to the Office of the Civil Affairs of the United States in Mecklenburg, it is the home of 170,000 Latinos, the city of Charlotte recognizes extraordinary contributions made in this community by immigrants, residents, citizens of origin Latin. Therefore, I, Alexander Lyles, at the head of Charlotte, proclaim the fifteenth of September until fifteenth of October of 2023 as the Year of Honor of the Spanish Heritage in Charlotte and recommend its observance to all the citizens. This is my hand and official signature of the city of Charlotte.
We want to invite a representative.
Gracias, Prieto. Please come here to receive this, my love.
Yeah, that's right.
Couldn't have said it better. Literally, could not have said it better.
All right, we have another recognition that we'd like to do tonight, and I'm going to ask Mayor Protem to read the resolution. And we want to thank Ms. Fonda Bryant for coming down, and Mayor Protem.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to read a joint proclamation of the City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. Whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death in the United States among individuals between the ages of ten and fourteen and twenty to thirty-four, in the United States there were 49,449 suicides in 2022, according to the Centers for Disease Control. And it is estimated that there are over 1.7 million suicide attempts each year. In 2020, North Carolina experienced 1,436 deaths by suicide, according to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And over ninety percent of the people who died by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And the stigma associated with mental health conditions and suicide reality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking life-saving help and further traumatizes survivors of suicide loss and people with lived experience of suicide. Whereas organizations such as the American Federation for Suicide Prevention envision a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have been lost or struggle. Now for she, Alexander Lyles, Mayor Charlotte, and George Dunlap, Chair of the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September tenth through sixteenth, 2023, as National Suicide Prevention Week.
It is the time now in our agenda that we begin a public forum. This is a forum where people have contacted or signed up with our deputy city clerk to speak to issues that are important to them and to speak to the council about those same issues. We have fifteen speakers tonight, and each speaker will have two minutes. And please know that we will ring a bell, and please be conscious of that. And we'll begin, I'll ask two people to come down because there are two microphones here, and please be careful, I always worry about people in the steps. But if we can begin, our first speaker is Cortez Washington, and our second speaker is Richard Pennibaker. And if you would just tell us your name, the clerk, if you have items that you want to leave with us, or if you have your remarks and you have more, then we will be, the clerk, the city clerk will make sure that we get copies of what you would like to distribute. Now, if you would give them to her right there, Ms. Yes, thank you. All right. So, Mr. Cortez? Thank you, Ms., I'm sorry, I said, Mr. Cortez, and it's Mr. Washington.
It's fine.
Thank you.
My name is Cortez Washington, I'm of fifty-one twenty-one, fifty-one twenty-seven Bougonia. I'm having a water issue. I think I'm the only person in Mecklenburg County with flood insurance. I had a, the last rainstorm, I had to get flood insurance. I've been calling, I called the Water Department, I called the mayor office, I called my city council, no one gave the answer that I needed because water was coming in my house. So I got in contact with the, I have two minutes, I got in contact with the governor's office. The governor's office recommended me to sue, but I don't want to be in court because my house is flooded now. So, the Water Department did come out, they started to work, but I don't have a drainage system in my yard at all. So my concern is, where is the city code enforcer? Right? I got a neighbor with a mailbox built right on top of a ditch that's running in my house. So it's important, man, I need some help. I believe in the good fight, I don't come, I'm not here to blame anybody, I'm here to get help. My wife and I moved from Boston, we've been here three months.
Oh, my gosh, we didn't, we didn't want you to be...
This is my son, and, you know, I believe in giving everybody a chance. My neighbors are like, the city's not going to do anything. No, no, let the city show me they're not going to do anything. And then I say, the city's not going to do anything. But I believe in you guys, I got pictures there so you can actually see what we're going through, we got a half million dollar house that we're trying to save. I felt like the house should have never been built in the place, but what can we do? Right? Only thing we can do now, we just fix it. So if we can get a drain ditch in front of the house, a sidewalk, a something that can help us, we'd be so thankful. And thank you to the Water Department for coming swiftly. At first, it was, it was, it was a fight, but they did get out there and start the process. But if you guys can help us, man, we are really appreciative. My number, six one seven, nine seven zero, ten fourteen.
Well, we're going to give, and I want you to meet with Liz Bapsen, a young, one of our assistant city managers, right now, instead of you giving us the phone number, let's give it to someone that can actually begin the process of addressing your issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Pennibaker?
Yes, Mayor Lyles.
Doctor Pennibaker. I'm sorry. Doctor Pennibaker. Doctor Pennibaker.
Thank you. Can y'all see me? I think I need a foot still. Mayor Lyles and city council members, thank you for your hard work for our wonderful city of Charlotte. I've lived and worked here for the past seven years, planted trees with Tree Charlotte, fought for Greenways, and I just officially became a North Carolina and Charlotte resident and got married here four months ago. Love this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So here's my pitch tonight. Look out, Seattle, here comes Charlotte. Yes, we have the power to make Charlotte the greenest city on the East Coast, like Seattle is on the West Coast. Why does this matter? Because we love Charlotte, our city of trees. By 2033 and ten years, we can become even healthier, cooler, safer, more beautiful, better water management, and even friendlier with a greener community for all our people and wildlife. Why? When you visit Seattle, there's commitment to building and maintaining a green city, and being one of the top green cities in the nation just jumps out at you. And I've delineated reasons for that. Over the next ten years, the United States is going to have a green revolution. The horses of history are galloping by, we can be spectators, or we can be active participants. So let's jump on these horses and make Charlotte a national leader in the green revolution. I've vacationed twice in Seattle, once with two of my grown sons, and once on my honeymoon this summer. As I've delineated, Seattle, the Emerald City, does a lot of these things, are very impressive, to make them one of the top ten green cities. Here in Charlotte, we are off to a great start, thanks to folks like you, supportive citizens, supportive mayor, supportive city and county council. We have some electric vehicles, but we need more. Tree Charlotte and land management is trying to get out as many trees as we can.
Thank you very much. If you have additional remarks, if you would just provide, I think we have a sheet that you've presented to us.
Yes, Mayor Lyles.
You know, I don't want any other mayor to be better than we are, right? So we'll have to pay attention to it.
Thank you for your time.
And actually, I know Bruce very well, and we'll just have to have a little bit of a contest. Thank you very much, Dr. Pennibaker. Our next two speakers are Katie Ferolia and Taylor Hodges.
Thank you for your time, council. My name is Taylor Hodges, and I am a staff member at Char-Mech Animal Care and Control. In my role, I help care for the animals. So we are fighting an uphill battle, and we need help financially and structurally. We are understaffed, underfunded, and I love my job, I love the animals and the people that I help, but working in this environment can have, and having to euthanize animals so often takes a mental toll. Community members help by volunteering and fostering, but our fosters are doubled up right now, and they are tired. I know firsthand because I often have foster dogs myself in order to stay, to help with the space issue at the shelter. You know, I go to work every day and I take care of the dogs, and then I come home and I continue my work there. And I'm not forced to do this, but I know that fostering does save lives, so I do. And Charlotte, unaffordable housing is a huge issue. People are having to give up their animals because they can't afford their home, yet they have nowhere to turn for help. Some of our own volunteers, fosters, and staff members are struggling with this. The culture surrounding pet companionship in Charlotte needs to change. Things like backyard breeding and dog fighting should not be tolerated. Low-cost, high-volume spay neuter should be a top priority. This must start with animal care and control. We have community programs in place, but they lack resources and appropriate funding. We need your help to make a, to make Charlotte Animal Services function in a way that better serves our community. So, please listen and hear our cries, feel our emotions. I invite you to visit our shelter so you can walk in our shoes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hodges. Ms. Ferioli, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Katie Ferioli, and I live in the Villa Heights neighborhood here in Charlotte. I am a volunteer and foster with Char-Mech Animal Care and Control. I also work as a director of behavioral health services for a large hospital system in North Carolina. I want to discuss the impact that poor animal support services has on the mental well-being of many of your constituents. As an intern with the Domestic Violence Prevention Agency, I have watched survivors of domestic violence refuse potentially life-saving emergency housing options because they were too afraid to leave their pets with their abusers and were concerned that the animals may not survive their stay at the animal shelter due to overcrowding. In my current role, there have been multiple instances in which patients leave against medical advice because they could not ensure the safety and care of their pets if they were to have an extended hospital stay. Imagine seeking necessary health care only to find out that your dog or cat was adopted out, or worse, euthanized while you were in the hospital. As a volunteer, I have watched workers at the shelter push wheelbarrows full of dead dogs and cats, animals that they have loved and cared for, to the incinerator because there was no room for them. Personally, I have been attacked by four off-leash dogs in 2023 in two separate instances, one in which landed both my dog and me in emergency care. I have felt failed by the response of the city each time, and am currently looking to move my family. I haven't been in counseling for traumatic stress and has taken a great toll on the general well-being and feelings of safety for my family. I feel that improved humane education and owner support may have prevented these attacks, as I know that at least one of the owners was on the radar of ACC, but no preventive measures were taken. That dog continues to live outside most of the time, is not neutered, and is generally unsocialized. There is no reason to think an attack like that will not happen again. As the city considers our pleas for increased funding and capacity building of animal support services, I hope that it does so through the lens of behavioral health. Behavioral health is a top priority for this county. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Alicia McCoy and Deborah Charles, can you make your way down to the lectern?
Because I'm number six. Felicia.
Felicia McCoy, are you here? You can go, Ms. Charles.
Okay.
You have two minutes.
This is my first time speaking in front of the council, so I just wanted to extend, you know, my respect for everyone that serves the city. And I serve the city in a number of different ways, but that's not why I want to talk here today. I also want to acknowledge that I am here today at some...
She needs to speak up.
Do you need me to speak up? Is that...
Just come a little closer to the microphone.
I also want to acknowledge that I am coming here with some reservation because I am being currently stalked by city and county law enforcement, and I am working on a case to prove that. But today, I'm here because I do think that there is some discrepancy happening with tax assessments. And as someone who has worked in financial services for over twenty-five years, transparency and an audit trail is very important. And I recently noticed a reduction in my lot size of almost half, which has significant implication for tax purposes as well as worth of the property. And I wanted to understand, what is the audit trail for changes that are made to lot sizes in particular? The audit trail for that? Yeah, that's what I want to understand, I want to understand, what is the audit trail for that? How are these changes, how are these changes made and how are they tracked? Because I have owned my property for nineteen years, and I've never had an issue until now, and I need to understand that there is an audit process in place, that I can feel comfortable that that change is not included as a part of the harassment that I'm currently experiencing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Charles. Ryan Bergman, our director, our budget director, will be, will be over there, he can get in contact with you and we can get some answers to your questions. Thank you very much for coming. Our next two speakers are Fonda Bryant and Kelly Van Kelly. Sponsored by Coke over here.
What'd you say?
You have two minutes, Ms. Bryant.
Okay, you can go ahead and go. If you would have told me twenty-eight years ago that I would be sharing my story all over the country to help others, I wouldn't have believed you. Twenty-eight years ago, for those who don't know my story, I called my Aunt Spanky, my hero, and told her she could have my shoes. She called me back and asked me, are you going to kill yourself? I answered, yes, and she went into action like a superhero and saved my life. I'm proud to say that my signature is all over the Charlotte skyline with my, with my suicide prevention signs in parking decks to prevent suicide and trauma. My suicide prevention signs will soon become law, North Carolina law, House Bill eight fifty-eight, the Fonda Bryant Suicide Prevention signage act, but I'm not done. I plan on making my sign a national law. Many more people could be here if people cared enough to get educated on the warning signs. Through education and simply caring, anyone can save someone's life. Everybody needs an Aunt Spanky, everybody needs to be like Aunt Spanky. Don't just hear my words, people, tonight. Take my words and turn them into action. Ask me how you can help prevent suicide. Suicide is the most preventable death of all deaths, and anyone can prevent a tragedy of suicide. You don't have to be a professional. Suicide is everybody's business. More people die in the U.S. by suicide than car deaths and homicides combined. Fifty-four percent of gun deaths in this country are suicides, with three out of five gun deaths being suicides. In North Carolina, every six hours, someone dies by suicide. Suicide among youth in North Carolina is the highest it's been in twenty years. The financial toll on society is also costly. In 2020, suicide and non-fatal deaths cost the nation over $500 billion. I leave you with this: Treat people with empathy, compassion, and kindness, because you never know what someone is going through. A smile can hide a lot of pain. Be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Ms. Van Kelly, you have two minutes.
Good evening, and thank you, mayor and city council members. I am Kelly Kelly, and I bring your greetings as the social action co-chair from the Charlotte Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, an organization that has been dedicated to service through social action since 1913. This week, we will infuse Charlotte and the surrounding communities with Delta Days in the City, a series of events that focus on the areas of education, health disparities, civic engagement, and voting. This year's theme is our voice, our impact, our power. Today's city council meeting is the first of our activities. Tomorrow, we'll attend the school board, and Thursday, we will host our infamous Crimson Brews on our CLTAC Instagram platform, featuring councils very own Tariq Bukhari and his opponent, Stephanie Hahn. The highlight of our events will conclude on Saturday, September thirtieth, where a host of speakers, including Mayor Lyles, council member Victoria Watlington, and Council Commissioner Val Malik, will join us for conference workshops and a luncheon at Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. Our workshops will include, our, our workshops will include education around healthcare disparities, voter education, and we'll also have a luncheon that will feature Deana King and Toussaint Romaine. The workshops are free and open to the public, and the luncheon is a ticketed event. We encourage each of you to attend while we paint the town red and continue to support and push social action within the Charlotte community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Kim Holmes and Todd Corris.
I also am attempting to paint the town red.
City council members and mayor, I'm here, I'm going to speak fast because I planned on three minutes. So, I'm here tonight out of concern for Charlotte's citizens' quality of life related to our preservation of mature trees and contiguous green space. According to our UDO 2040 Plan, Charlotte's tree canopy goal is fifty percent by 2050. According to studies done several years ago, we were down to forty-two percent, and I can only imagine that percentage to be significantly less when the new study results come out. Anyone driving anywhere in Charlotte can see with their own eyes the large swaths of mature trees and green space being clear-cut, and many have felt the impacts on their immediate neighborhoods and communities, some experiencing flooding in their backyards that occurred only after development went in, and noise and light pollution increasing due to removal of acres of trees. One inch of rain falling on one acre of undisturbed land is absorbed, no runoff. One inch of rain falling on one acre of impervious surfaces, such as parking lots, buildings, et cetera, creates 27,000 gallons of runoff per acre. Outdated retention ponds are not going to be enough to effectively mitigate this for larger properties. We realize development will occur, and it certainly is needed in certain sectors. However, it appears it has gotten significantly out of bounds. Mature trees and green space are Charlotte's icon, her beauty, her attractiveness. We seem to be killing the goose that laid the golden egg. It is not just beauty and tranquility the mature trees and undisturbed green space provide, there are numerous studies showing that driver speed laws along roads in which there are trees and green space, crime decreases in these areas, significant flood mitigation, as referenced earlier, and reduction of light and noise pollution. In addition to mental and physical health benefits of CO2 sequestration, negative ions, and increasing immune health, and on and on. In fact, Canadian, in Canada, physicians now write prescriptions regularly for patients experiencing anxiety and depression, for children and adults to spend a certain amount of time just walking in the woods. In Japan, they call this forest bathing. In Charlotte, we lack large areas of just passive use green spaces. Instead, most...
Thank you very much, Ms. Holmes. Do you have any further comments? I know if you can, you can give your comments to the clerk, and she'll put them on the record and make sure the council gets it. Mr. Corrus? And after Mr. Corrus, we have Diane Thornton and Simon Munoz Alvarez.
Members of Charlotte City Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Todd Corrus, and I represent a number of our neighbors and fellow citizens that reside in uptown Charlotte. Our organization is called Street Peace, and we seek to make Charlotte a safer, more livable, and sustainable city. We support all of the initiatives the city is taking to improve pedestrian safety and road safety, and understand the myriad issues facing a growing city like ours. I've lived in Charlotte for nearly a decade, and I'm proud to call this city home. I care greatly about Charlotte becoming a safer place, and this is why I and many other citizens bring this issue to you. At best, this problem, this problem is aggravating and a nuisance, though illegal. At its worst, the issue is a pedestrian fatality waiting to happen. There's an ongoing issue of many drivers illegally modifying their exhaust systems to emit dangerously loud noises, far greater than the established limit of eighty-five decibels. The problem is threefold. Firstly, drivers are breaking, breaking the law. Secondly, drivers drive dangerously fast and pose a public safety risk to pedestrians and other drivers. Lastly, the enforcement mechanisms of existing laws and statutes do not appear to be actively enforced by CMPD and state inspections. To trigger loud engine noises, these drivers frequently drive in excess of fifty miles per hour in residential areas and roads in uptown that are shared with pedestrians. The drivers are reckless and show no concern for the danger they pose to pedestrians and other motorists. These actions violate NC Statute twenty dash one-two-eight pertaining to exhaust system and emissions control devices. The City of Charlotte's Noise Ordinance, Number nine-five-eight-five dash X, states that no activity shall substantially and unreasonably invade and harm the privacy, peace, health, and welfare of city residents. This is most absolutely a substantial and unreasonable invasion of privacy, peace, health, and welfare. We see little to no action in the city center area from CMPD in enforcing these laws. Many residents, ourselves included, have seen such vehicles blaze past parked police vehicles. Were CMPD to pilot a single weekend of policing this activity around uptown, we are certain the number of citations and fines would be considerable.
Thank you very much. If you have additional comments, you can give them to the clerk, and they'll be distributed and put on the record. Diane Thornton?
I thought somebody was speaking before me, the gentleman there.
You're next, ma'am.
Take your time coming down those stairs, Diane.
Take your time coming down those stairs, Diane. Hello there. Thank you for having me here. My name is Diane Thornton. I live in South Charlotte, and I'm here regarding a potential development that could take place next to the Four Mile Greenway. Quoting the Charlotte 2040 Comprehensive Plan on its growth framework, quote, "This framework is informed and shaped by the community based on the assumption that we must listen to each other and consider the intended and unintended consequences of growth on all residents, households, and neighborhoods." It identifies and measures areas in Charlotte where residences and businesses may not have access to daily needs, choices for housing, a diversity of employment, or safe and healthy environments, while providing more transparency and accountability as we plan, design, and implement public and private investments in housing, employment, services, schools, parks, roads, trails, and other infrastructures." And another quote from the 2040 Plan, "The Tree Canopy Action Plan will define policies that preserve, restore, and enhance the canopy. It will continue the work of past tree-related initiatives, including the 2017 Urban Forest Master Plan, and guide the upcoming Unified Development Ordinance." So what is going on with the 53-plus acres of old forest land that is under consideration to be destroyed for the building of 640 luxury housing units adjacent to the Four Mile Greenway on Re Road? The Four Mile Greenway is an environment where people have a great opportunity to learn about many aspects of nature, including the importance of wildlife. The wildlife and the Greenway rely on those 53-plus acres for food, shelter, and water. The floodplains in that area protect our water resources and protect existing homes from flooding. Turning this acreage into a multi-dwelling luxury development does not comply with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, nor does potentially compromising a public city park trail.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thornton. If you have additional comments, I believe this is something that Mr. Driggs is working on.
Ms. Thornton, there is a community meeting on the 29th. I hope you're aware of that, and if you write to me, I'll get in touch with you about this. Twenty-eighth, correct. You're right. You're right.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make sure, want to make sure you're new. That's the one.
Mr. Munoz Alvarez, you have two minutes.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, buenas tardes, buenas noches. My name is Simone Munoz Alvarez, and I'm the serving Chair for the Latin American Chamber of Commerce, and it gives me great honor and a lot of pleasure to be standing in front of you all. On behalf of the Hispanic-Latino business community, thank you, or should I say gracias, for the proclamation and acknowledgement of the contributions that our community makes to this great city we call home. In recent years, the Latino community in Charlotte has seen a remarkable increase contributing to this city's cultural richness and equally important to its economic vitality. The growth presents a unique opportunity for residents of all backgrounds to come together and foster a more inclusive environment and our queen city. Latinos are the largest minority group, making up 19% of the nation's population. One out of five Latino people in the United States are Latinos. As we consider the large and rapidly growing economic contributions of Latinos living in the Charlotte metro area and across the Carolinas, it is important to understand that this impact is not new. Instead, it is the continuation of centuries-old tradition, a tradition of Latinos providing economic strength and resiliency for the benefit of all people. On a national scale, Latinos contribute 2.8 trillion to the GDP and add, on average, of 600,000 jobs to the workforce per year. Latinos in Charlotte metropolitan area are poised to help power the region's economy as they add their value, population growth, work ethic, and family values. We are committed to strengthening and adding value to this great city and to make this a place we call home, the best place to live for years to come. Again, Council members, Mayor Lyles, a dear friend to us, on behalf of everyone joining us tonight which left, thank you for celebrating us tonight and giving us this opportunity. Feliz mes de la nce hispana.
Thank you.
Marta Tataje and Jose Hernandez Paris. Please come down.
Hello, buenas noches. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Lyles, and Mayor Pro Tem Winston, Council members and staff. My name is Marta Tataje, and I'm a board member of NAREP, that's the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals, and Director of their Legislative Influencers of Government Affairs, otherwise called Liga, so NAREP Liga. I have been a mortgage lender for the past 21 years and have lived in District 6 for the past 21 years. NAREP is the largest Hispanic business organization in the country with over 40,000 members and over 100 chapters throughout the country. Our local chapter has over 200 members and still growing. Our mission is to advocate for the sustainability of homeownership for the Hispanic community, for we know that this is the best way for us to close that wealth gap. NAREP reports that in the next two decades, 70% of new homeowners will be Latino. We have seen Latino homeownership rates consistently increase over the past eight years, and it's expected to continue to increase, while other groups may decrease. We show a 66.1% labor force participation rate here in the state of North Carolina, the highest of any group, earning us a position of having 7.9 million mortgage-ready people. So now, did you know that between 2019 and 2021, the Charlotte metro statistical area was number one in growth in number Latino-owned household by adding 8,614 households? And did you know that we were number one in the growth rate of Latino-owned household at 27% growth rate? Yet, we're still lagging with a 51.7% homeownership rate in North Carolina compared to 75.2% among non-Hispanic whites. The Charlotte metro area obviously is a desirable place for us to live, and we thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Follow them to the clerk. Two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the City Council members. I just am here to thank you for taking the time to acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month and the immense contribution of Hispanic Latinos to the Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. As the Executive Director of the Latin American Coalition, one of the oldest organizations in the state of North Carolina, with over 33 years of service, we are very proud to call Charlotte home, and we're very grateful for the acknowledgement and for the time that you have taken today. Just wanted to be here to say thank you for the time that you took to acknowledge us, and we hope that you continue to acknowledge our contributions in future years. Thank you so much.
And Vivian Collins and Rafael Prieto, bring us on home. Vivian Collins. That concludes our public forum. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone, for the time and attention that you give, and thank you for those that came down to express their concerns with our community, and hopefully you've had a great team of people to help you get through some of the maze of local government. So with that, we will now go to our business meeting. We have a public hearing on closing a portion of Woodcrest Avenue. We have no speakers. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing and to adopt a resolution? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor of this item, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? No one's opposed. Our next item is to open a public hearing on closing a portion of public right-of-way adjacent to David Taylor Drive. We do not have any speakers. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution to close a portion of David Taylor Drive? And I'm close the public hearing. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Does anyone oppose? That's unanimous. On the next item, we have a public hearing on the resolution to close an unopened right-of-way off South Cedar Street. We have no speakers, so do we have a motion to... Close and adopt the resolution? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Mr. Graham is a yes as well. All right. The next item is a public hearing for Torrance Area voluntary annexation. We do not have any speakers. Do I have a motion to adopt the annexation ordinance with an effective date of September 25th, 2023, to extend the corporate limits to include this property and assign it to the adjacent City Council District 3?
We're closed, adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? All right, that's item 14. So the next section of our agenda is to... Just did Torrance Avenue, and so we've done that. So we will now go to the city manager's report. Earlier in our meeting today, the city manager began a discussion of two items that we had, one of which is quality of life work effort being done by the staff, as well as social districts, which I hope people are familiar with. So I would like to have the manager start off with the program, either one, in any order.
So thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Before they start, I provided you with a 30-day memo that we do. I also, in Thursday's packet, there was a question about the work that has been done in each committee, so we provided you with an update on the work that's been completed in each of the council committees, as well as what's outstanding. I do know that I have one outstanding question from Councilmember Mayfield about the mix of homeownership versus rental, which we're working through that. And the two other items that the mayor mentioned earlier is while we were in 267 and started to have a conversation about the new quality-of-life team, and I see that Debbie has the team ready to roll. But also, just a little bit of an update after that in terms of social districts, because you have been getting a lot of questions, and we just want to make sure that we tell you exactly where we are with that. So, Mayor, members of council, if it's fine, I'd like to just have Debbie and the team just come up and, I guess, just take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones, for the team. Thank you for being here. I think you've already heard from one of our public speakers on the expanded noise of vehicles. Maybe we need to start off and, we'll probably add it to your list of many other things that we can define as quality of life. So with that, the council members, I will go ahead and start. We'll just go around the dais so that everyone will have an opportunity to address any of the questions, and I would appreciate if we could start with Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me get my notes here. Can we bring the presentation up here?
Can we get the presentation?
Slide number four. So while we are getting this slide up and ready, can we proceed, or do we need to...
We're waiting for the slide to come up. Does everybody have that one? I think it's item page, which page was it, Ms. Ashmira?
Slide number three, where you have listed current focus areas, and currently we have three listed. So, Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, you had referred public defecation and urination and drinking in the park, and I don't see that listed. Is that not going through this quality-of-life issue, or is that following a different process?
It was referred to the Housing Committee. It was a conversation, and if you saw the charge, it is really more around the areas in the uptown, and I asked Ms. Watlington to address the issues that she had in the referral and the next steps.
I think, actually, the city manager is going to address some of the things. I met with a couple of the ACMs today with my questions, and I believe that staff is working on a path forward, so.
Yeah, the mayor, members of council, and to your point, Councilmember Ashmira, the mayor did have that referral to the Housing and Safe Communities Committee. We have been working with the chair, and also, I guess, maybe more importantly, there will be a public listening session this Wednesday? And the concept is to look at a lot of the work that has already been occurring around this area for the number of years, and instead of just maybe just focusing on the three items that you just said, to make sure that we're looking at this holistically. So hopefully, I got that right based on your meeting today.
And that's for the uptown generally, right? So we are looking at all the quality-of-life issues that uptown residents had come out and presented, and these are some of the issues that are just requires time sensitivity, and some of these residents are facing these issues as we are speaking. If you can get some sort of timeline around that, because I would like to see ordinance updates sooner rather than later, if that's what the committee decides to do, but I know that's what uptown residents had specifically asked for.
Yes, I would like to add that as we discover more information, more issues, we will see that some of that's relevant to many areas through our city and not just the uptown.
Especially in our business areas, I think that we are seeing where that happens, but I think that Ms. Watlington has had the opportunity to, I expect, read a lot of studies that have been around, but trying to figure it out. And I think updates would be very, very welcome by the council members to be able to weigh in. And I see, Ms. Ashmira, do you have...
Yes, I have a few more, so maybe Ms. Watlington can add this to your list. But scooters on sidewalks, specifically in uptown, it's an issue. Other day, I was, our family was at the CIAF, the International Arts Festival, and we saw a gentleman who could not, who was on a wheelchair and could not get around because there were scooters that were just zooming through, and we really need to look into that issue and how we can enforce it, because I know currently we have that in the ordinance, but it's how do we enforce it to ensure that residents, that we are really being equitable in enforcement, especially for those residents who have special needs?
Absolutely.
And just one last item that I have, actually just two last items that I have. If you can go to the signs, by the way, ladies, you all did a great job. I appreciate anything that Debbie brings up, and Rebecca, and I know it's data-driven, and you have all, I mean, I've always enjoyed working with Debbie when she was supporting the Transportation Committee, so I certainly appreciate the work that you do, Debbie, Rebecca, Deborah, and the entire team. I really like what the staff has done when it comes to illegal truck parking, because we understand that's an issue throughout the city, especially in the university area, and I'll be supporting some of the ordinance update language. What I would like to see also with litter, I know you all had done volunteer work with Keep Charlotte Beautiful and other organizations. Are we looking into signs that says, you know, if you litter, this will be the fine? Because I see in certain parts of our city, its litter has been concentrated, and it's great to actually address the issue, but how can we make very intentional effort in preventing litter?
Hi, council. Thank you, Councilwoman Ashmira. Debbie Smith, Transportation, just for the record. Great questions that you're asking, and I so greatly appreciate this support. What we really find, though, with signs such as that, no littering with the fines, is that that doesn't always deter the behavior, and so what we're really trying to focus on is what is the source of that behavior? Because what we're finding is that there are more things around that. An example I'll give you, David Cox and W.T. Harris, what we were finding is that an apartment complex where their trashcans were located in their dumpsters, we found that people were leaving the community, leaving that area with the garbage on their vehicle, and so it was that it was an issue, and that those signs in those locations was a reminder, oh, my goodness, we didn't take care of that. But in just locations where it's collecting, it's really important we're getting to the source of what that issue is. So signs are effective, but not always in every situation.
I understand signs may not be effective in every situation. I understand signs may not be effective in every situation, and it is a behavioral problem. I mean, it, it is, it's shameful where I, I mean, where we see literally people are eating from fast food restaurants, or just any restaurants, and just dumping the trash right there in a parking lot. I mean, I have seen that over and over again in East Charlotte, and I know that's not unique to East Charlotte, that's also an issue in other parts of our city. So if we can really figure out what we can do from the behavioral side to prevent it other than signs, I would be interested in those ideas. And I know we have community leaders that, that actually do cleanup effort, and I'd love to hear from them, like Mimi Davis, and we have Emily and others who are, who have seen this issues, persistent issue throughout, throughout, I mean, many, many years, but we haven't been able to find a solution. And I know that Mr. Phipps would want us to find a solution sooner than later. Great, great work on the EV parking spot, because a lot of times, you're right, there are times, my, many times, I'm, even in our public, even in our parking that we have, hopefully, we can enforce that, starting with our parking. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Right. I think you're right about Mr. Phipps. He actually has called me and said he has an idea, so I'm going to send that idea to you guys, not keep it with, with just me. All right, Ms. Malina?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate you guys for being forward-thinking. I think I'm really happy to see that, you know, we've taken the initiative to, you know, bring on four, potentially four new team members that will, you know, address this around the clock, because, you know, there's a constraint with, you know, currently code enforcement, we pretty much stop at 5:00 PM, right? So, you know, now to have, you know, that talent in place that's going to, you know, look beyond 5:00 PM and take the measures to be preventative beyond those hours, I think that's a great idea. And I'm, and I'm kind of peeling down, because again, I was pretty excited to see that we're taking this initiative. I wanted to know specifically, because I didn't see where we mentioned vehicle parking, because a lot of the concerns that I received from residents are around vehicle parking. I'm thinking of one in particular, where someone recently brought to my attention that there was someone like taking the liberty of parking in the entrance of a neighborhood, of course, right? Where they, you know, I don't know if this is what they consider to be, you know, overflow parking for them, but I wanted to see if that's something that we're actually considering and, and any type of measures that you all are discussing as a department to address that.
Councilwoman Malina, thank you. We're aware of that location, and I'd love if we could bring up slide number four. So I think this slide really starts to illustrate as we learn more about the situation. So we, we may have been focused on the commercial truck parking in those particular areas when you brought forward the concern about the parking in addition to just trailers and tractors. We found that there was greater concern around that, so we're looking into that. But this really tells us, as we, as we dive in, as we find those solutions, we actually find that there's more emerging issues around those, and so more work to come on those as it relates to that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm really interested in that, because, you know, you guys know from my reaching out, it's, the residents are really concerned about it. I, you know, even I've had residents actually ask me, you know, like, what happens? We continue to, you know, make these, you know, concerns known, nothing happens, so I know offline, I'm looking forward to us continuing that piece of the conversation. I also wanted to lift up, so landscape management, that's a, that one kind of snuck in, right? When we think, it, it's not necessarily what you would consider to be quality of life necessarily, but you think about landscaping. Can you give me more information about that? Because I, you know, if you're riding down the street, other than just trash, we see, you know, sidewalks, we see all of these other things, so can you, I'd like to know more.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Malina. Again, Rebecca Hefner, Housing and Neighborhood Services. Landscape management is a great partner when it comes to quality of life concerns in the community. A couple, a couple of things we see, keeping, keeping the city right-of-way mowed, or areas that are kept nicely landscaped. In addition, we have partnerships in the corridors of opportunity, where we're doing additional mowing with our partners at Landscape Management. So one of, one of the things that we see often is that trash is easier to hide when you can, when you, when there's other things growing around it. So oftentimes, we see those two things together, overgrowth and litter, so they come together as part of a mitigation strategy.
Okay. You know, I can see a world, actually, it's funny, I was talking to someone who ran against me for council, who does general services, and he offered to me as an idea, he said, you know, Marjorie, why wouldn't we like have people in our district that we contracted with the city to like cut some of these weeds, or maintain some of the sidewalks? So, you know, offline, I'd like to think through that, like ideas that we can use to, you know, really even like activate some of the residents in our communities who would be willing to partner with us possibly to help us mitigate some of those risks. I mean, this is just an idea, not making any promises to anybody, but, you know, I love when people kind of bring those types of creative, you know, conversations forward, and they're solution-oriented. It really helps us to really think through some possibilities that we can bring back to you guys to really kind of, you know, go through. Also, last thing for me in particular, so East Charlotte, we, I mentioned this, I actually was talking to our, our city manager, having a conversation, we got this gift with Highway 74. It stretches from the mountains to the beach, right? And so when people come through 74, for some people, if they're just traveling through, it's really the face of the city for them, unless they come off of one of our exits to do something, or go uptown, or whatever. And so I'd like to see us kind of look into partnering with the state to talk about, specifically along that particular highway, and I know there would be others that we could pretty easily identify, and I don't know if you think that would be possible, but I'd, I'd like for us to talk about that from, you know, a landscape perspective, to, do you think that would be possible, for us to at, at least start an interest conversation? You know, because I'm very, I love partnerships, right? I think, you know, working together is the best way, and I know we can't make anybody do anything, but they have a vested interest in making sure that, you know, this, this thoroughfare is, is, you know, nicely facing, you know, the citizens and residents that pass through it. So I'd like to know if we could, you know, continue those conversations and see if there's interest, maybe?
Councilwoman Malina, I love the, the idea generation, and you know, you and I have had lots of conversations. So I grew up in the Charlotte area on the east side, went to East Mac High School, I went to, you know it, UNC Charlotte, my alma mater, so I love, love this city. I learned to drive on US 74, back when it was a, a very narrow. I won't give away my age, but absolutely, those conversations are instrumental. One of my, my parting comments is, is in our last conversation, is that partnership with NCDOT. And so while we can't make, you know, promises on what's possible, what we can do is have those conversations and see where those opportunities are. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Very interested in that. That's all I have.
One thing I skimmed over in the presentation that I do want to make sure to mention as it relates to the NCDOT partnership, is that they are in the midst of their bi-annual litter sweep. It is the fall litter sweep right now on state-maintained roads. So you might see volunteers out, you might see state maintenance crews out, and you can get out yourself and help with that by checking out the fall litter sweep with NCDOT.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you so much. Thank you all for this presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing. You know, this has been a huge issue in District Four that predates me, you know, we talked about Councilmember Phipps, but I've worked closely with you guys, even having a town hall in 2020. I believe that you said this work started in 2020, is that, is that what I heard?
Yes, Ms. Johnson, so really, this work has been ongoing, and so really, it was the collaboration in this team strategy approach and, and terming it the Quality of Life group, and what Rebecca described in the last, in the last meeting really was about the steering team and getting that together. So, so the work has been ongoing, so it's not that it just started nine months ago. Really, it's the strategy and how we're tracking and how we're reporting back out to you, is that intentional effort that we're, that we're doing.
I appreciate that, since I've been working really closely with you all, and I know you've been working on this since 2020. I'm glad, I'm glad you're able to present it now. I wanted some, some information about the truck parking. I know Jane Tallon was on the call when I met with truck, the truck drivers also, and there was some discussion about a lot, or something off 85, or, or some vacant lot or former waste station that, that we were looking at. Is there any update on a new location for truck parking? Do we have any progress on that?
I'm pleased to report, as we've been really talking about this issue with the private facilities, that there is one company who offers about 600 spaces in four locations around, around the city, and he was just able to secure another location at I-45, and that's going to include about 100 spaces there. And so in addition to the private side, we are talking with the NCDOT and how we possibly can use some of the older waste stations that aren't currently in use, and I know they've done some preliminary evaluations, so there's a lot of opportunity out there for us to continue that conversation.
That's great to know. I hope the reporters are listening, and that, you know, that's top story, and hopefully District Four residents are listening also. What about working with the state? Many roads in District Four are state-owned, as you know. And I appreciate your mentioning David Cox, because I know there's been more attention to that area, but how are we going to partner with NCDOT? They do this, you know, this cleanup twice a year, but I, we see litter on our streets daily. And solid waste are great, when you call, also code enforcement, I'm able to talk to Jane as well, so you guys are great in being responsive and reactive, but what are we doing from a, for, for those of us who have the state-owned roads? Is there a routine?
Absolutely, Ms. Johnson. What I think, what I'd love to be able to follow up with you on is the robust effort that the NCDOT has on the state-maintained roadways, so inner states and many of the major arterial streets. There is a, a schedule to it, there is an intentional effort around it, and it was just, it was impressive, the amount of money that they are putting into that cleanup effort, and so I'd love to be able to follow back up with you on that information.
That's awesome. Thank you, because I've even had the senators on different calls, so I appreciate that. As far as the litter, we have added signage on WT Harris, and I believe the fines have increased, have the fines increased for litter, or, I know they've increased for truck parking, or you all were talking about that earlier?
We're talking about ordinance updates that wouldn't be increased for, for truck parking. Litter, I believe, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, is actually legislated, right, at the state level?
Okay.
But we'll follow up with you on, on what that fine amount is, but that is legislated at the state level.
Okay. And the quality of life team, when, do you know when those employees will start, and, you know, what the process will be? Is there an app where people will be able to report problems, or what's the next step?
Great question, Councilmember Johnson. So we are currently in the hiring process for the new staff. There is a supervisor position and then the inspector positions that are posted right now, and we will get those, that team onboarded quickly. Again, the work has already started, but getting the team in place will enable us to move more quickly and spread out into other places in the city. And one of the things that we're working on now, in terms of the technology and process enhancements, is the reporting. As you know, in the past, people have had to report truck parking when it's not during codes hours to 911, and we're trying to create a way to make those reports go through 311, CLT+, the traditional other, you know, Emerald Web, so that we can get those routed to the right place and the right people to respond. So we expect that to take a couple of months to get all of those processes underway, but we'll make sure to have a robust communication about those reporting methods once they're in place.
Thank you. So will there be a quality of life page, like webpage on the, on the city's page? I'd like to see that, and I'd like, like, information or educate folks on where people, on where trucks can park. That would be very helpful. I know that, you know, if, I know there needs to be a sign in order to enforce it, but can they park in areas such as, you know, on the street where the Keith Y is? You know? So if that's not allowed, you know, the residents need to know that and know how to report that, because there's really, I'm telling you now, behind the Keith Y, and I'm sure Mr. Graham will talk about this, there's really, really a lot of abuse there.
Keith Y gets really out of town.
Right, right. So, okay. Well, I appreciate the presentation. Mr. Jones, I appreciate the attention, you know, I've been working on this for years, so thank you so much for the progress. Thank you.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Team, thank you for the presentation earlier. Wish we could have gotten to this upstairs, where we ran out of time, but I do have a couple of questions, and they're in alignment with what you've heard from our colleagues. Do you know that, that we're going to have the cleanup for the fall litter streets program? It's a perfect tie-in when you come into neighborhoods, come in off of Brookshire, off of Bellhaven, off of other areas where trucks are lined all along the highway, if we're looking to try to have the streets cleaned, how do we identify that? One of the conversations that I had was someone in the community whose family are also in the trucking, as far as drivers industry. They shared, of which I'm quite sure you all have already had conversations, that there's a timer, for the lack of a better word, that gives you an hour notice before you run up, because some of our truck drivers have noted that, well, which by law, you can only drive so many hours. Also, weight is a factor. Well, even though we ship a lot, we're not shipping in some cases as much, for some of our drivers, the way their pay is calculated is based off that weight. We have trucking companies for parking right here in the city, just three of them, Uptown Truck and Fleet, King Pan Parking, Charlotte Truck Parking. We have companies that charge by the hour, by the day, by the weekend. That $25 that we're currently charging, it is cheaper to pay that fine, and that has been shared throughout the industry, that it's cheaper to pay that $25 versus paying that fee at the actual designated trucking facility. It may sound bad, but if I tow your truck, that's going to be a lot more than that $25, and it's going to be a lot more than that $60 or that $110 that you would have paid for that parking, because what you're also causing is if I'm coming off the highway and you have someone meeting you, and they're in a vehicle, and they are not completely out the road, unfortunately, too many people come off the highway doing whatever the speed is, whether that speed is 60, 55, or 70, they're coming around that curve. We have had a number of near misses that have happened. I personally, today's Monday, Friday, was driving on 85 heading towards Sunset when a truck who was two lanes over, and let's say I'm in my vehicle where I am, and you're at the Sunset exit, decided, oh, I'm doing 70 miles an hour, but I want to get off on Sunset, and literally, had I not been paying attention to what they were doing, I had to run up on the curb in order to avoid having this little vehicle totaled by a truck driver that was speeding. So while we're having these conversations, and while we're looking at updating our CLT+ app, we do not have an option in there for obstruction that says truck. We do have on here, in the CLT+ app, an option- truck. We do have on here in the CLT Plus app, an option for obstruction, obstruction of right of way. But it does not specifically give you the opportunity to picture, to take a picture of that tag and other things. Those are ways to help. I hope we are able to move forward with that $100. But I also would like for you all to really consider and look, really look into what towing is. Because the idea of saying, well, we allowed it for more than a year now, for you to say, well, up to so many hours I have to pull over. But you have a tracker that gives you an hour notice that you're coming up on your time. And if your choice is the fact that you feel that it is cheaper to pay the $25 fine than to actually pay at one of our registered licensed business owning truck stop companies, that is a challenge because it's causing a health and a safety risk in our community. When we look at the litter piece, Mr. Manager, that's a, for me, a direct conversation with the social districts. So when you look at other communities, we love to talk about the, the social impact of walking around. But a lot of those items end up in the streets, not in the trash can. Unfortunately, you can also go through a number of areas where people have chosen to use outside space to relieve themselves versus getting access because you won't necessarily be able to get access into a hotel, into, if you're not a red, if you're not visiting or you're not patronizing the restaurant or the bar. These are things when we're thinking about litter and we're thinking about that partnership of cleanup, we have a lot of high grass. I am really excited that we're bringing on a weekend team to help because a lot of it happens after 5:00 on Friday afternoon. Being able to expand some of the options in our CLT Plus app will help. We're having separate conversations regarding our traffic lights. We all have been in an instance where we've sat behind a vehicle and we watched them literally open their car door and set a whole bag of trash out at the light right before they pull off. Or if you haven't, a lot of us have experienced that. When we do a, an combination, we might be able to capture some of that. Because the only way we change behavior is to change behavior. And unfortunately, some of those behavior changes need to be associated with a fine. Because that is, we're seeing the impact of it. The question is, do we have the ability? So to look into that would be very helpful. When we look at what is identified as illegal parking, again, if we have the ability to look at towing as well. Because we should be able to track some of these trucks, license numbers, VIN numbers. So we have an idea who repeat offenders are. So if you have a update, I would love to hear so that we can know how we can better support you.
So our ordinance does allow towing of anybody that's illegally parked. We'll have to get back to you on what park it uses as far as this, you know, I don't think they tow the first offender, but they probably do have a limit for repeat offenders. But we can get back to you on that. And if that needs to change, we can certainly talk about it.
So I was under, and thank you for mentioning that. My impression of park it is meters uptown. I'm talking about trucks that are along highways, that are on neighborhood streets. On Mount Holly, Huntersville Road, right before you get to the middle school, there's a truck that every so often is parked there. We have a parking lot, a parking company that is literally around the corner. So the first, for me, the first connection should be outreach to help you know, here's three, but we actually may have more that are in your immediate area. So what is the barrier? Now, if the barrier is you've identified it's more financially beneficial for you to pay that $25 versus the actual rent a fee, that's a different conversation. Because you are causing challenges in the community with blocking the bike lanes, creating a sight distance barrier when vehicles are trying to enter and exit residential as well as highway. It is causing a challenge and a safety challenge when you stop cleaning out your car on the house, out your truck cab to climb into a vehicle. These things are all dangerous and could cause specific challenges for us. So those are a couple of pieces that I would like for us to check into. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And thank you, team, for your amazing work.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And let me to offer my, my thankfulness to the team and the work you've done over the past, I said, 2020. That we raised a flag about the illegal parking in February of this year, when we sounded the alarm, that there were a number of quality of life issues, not only in the University City area, which I share with Councilman Johnson, but proliferating throughout the city in reference to illegal parking of the commercial vehicles, the storage of the, of the trailers themselves, where the guys would take off with the cab and leave the trailers there over the weekend, using our streets as storage, the litter that they leave behind when they come and go, and the crime that tends to center around these illegal parking lots from the drivers and people who visit them. I'll leave it at that. And so it's an issue. It's an issue that, Mr. Manager, I think we need to address with a level of urgency, from my perspective, and notwithstanding the work that's already been done by the team from the enforcement perspective. So I clearly understand and respect the work that's been done in terms of level setting, making sure that we research, that we understand, that we outreach, that we collaborate. But I think it's time for this council to take action on what I think is relatively significant issues that are impeding the city as a whole. Certainly working with stakeholders, the state, and others are a part of that equation. But I, the background information is good. I appreciate it. I was looking for the, the man course, not the appetizer that we received today, right? Because we've been kind of talking about this for, for nine months, 10 months. There are a number of neighborhood organizations are looking at the council to take some proactive action. And your next steps as fall of 2023, I'm not sure what does that mean? That's October, it's November, it's December, right? So when are we going to take action? What is that action going to look like in terms of, I think Councilmember Mayfield is correct, in terms of towing, $25 is laughable. How high can we increase those fees and fines? How are we collaborating with the trucking industry to ensure that we identify, that we're not trying to punish anybody, right? Because logistics is a part of the economy of our city. I get it. I understand it. But no one wants to run in the back of an 18 wheeler on Paris Boulevard, or having their neighborhood being visually polluted by tractor trailers and the debris that they leave behind. And so I am ready for some action, Mr. Manager. Solid recommendations that we can act on, right? And it's been nine months. And certainly, foundation setting is important. I get it. I understand it. But there's a sense of urgency that somehow this council, this board, the city is losing control. And so the resources that we are pitting in place is appropriate. This council member is willing to put more in the next budget cycle. Well, we have to. But I think it's really important now that we kind of roll up our sleeves and kind of do the hard work in terms of answering the question. So that's my first comment. My second comment is to go back to a conversation that Councilmember Schmeyer brought up about Uptown Charlotte and Fourth Ward in terms of the committee referral. Again, I hope we don't process this to death, right? There was a specific action that this council took that the Friends of Fourth Ward want us to revisit about adding additional ordinance that we took off the books. I think we have to answer that question, either we're going to do it or we're not. And all the other things that we have to study along with it, we should do it. But there's a specific ask, Councilmember Wallington, from that committee about what are we going to do? Again, this is an issue that we brought to the attention of our staff as early as April of this year. And so, and the Friends of Fourth Ward has been patient. I represent them. They're running out of patience with me and others on this issue, right? And I think it's about time that we answer the question. We can't, or we, oh, we can or we won't, right? And any internal issues that we're facing with CNPD Legal and CMPT Chief of Police about these ordinance, obviously, we don't want to criminalize being poor, right? We don't want to do that. But if we're going to talk about quality of life and our issue, there are some issues that are happening in our Uptown area that I think we need to say that we can, we're going to address those issues specifically that they outline, or we say, we're not going to do that. And, but this is what we're going to do. They deserve a, an answer, an answer, I believe, Councilmember Wallington, sooner than later, right? Certainly, I will be at the public process on Wednesday, not as a participant, but demonstrating support for the input. I'm not sure you're going to find anything different than we know now, right? Based on what their concerns are. Maybe additional issues, but the core issues, those ordinance that we took away, and they want us to pick back into place. And then lastly, you know, again, crime is a quality of life issue, right? And a conversation I had with the, the city manager earlier today, and notwithstanding where all the trends are going in terms of crime in our city, and they're all going in the right direction, for sure. But if you don't feel safe, you're not safe. And people are watching the news every night, every morning about various shootings throughout our city. And that's impacting their comfort level and the quality of life based on their perception about what's happening in Charlotte, not understanding that we have the data that demonstrates that this may be going in a different direction. But again, if you don't feel safe, you're not safe. And I think that's an issue that I would hope that this quality of life issue continues to draw CNPD in as well, to begin to talking about some of the things that we're doing. And we're doing a lot of great things, alternative violence, starting in District Two, and now District Three, going throughout the city, there's more, right? Million dollar grant from the Congresswomen. We're trying to prevent some of these issues to, before they occur. But most of these things are relationship driven. When someone gets in an argument and instead of doing what I probably did when I was growing up, we had a fistfight, they're taking out guns. And then they're shooting folks. And they're killing folks. And, and it's just not on one part of the city. It's happening citywide from District Six to District Two, to District Three, throughout the city. And again, we got this reality of where our stats are, which are going all in the right direction in terms of reducing crime. Crime is low in certain categories. But that's not the perception out there. And, and we have to educate and continue to do the good works that we're doing. And, and then work with other community organizations, because it's not just the city council's problem. It's churches, it's nonprofit organization, it's our corporate leaders, it's all of us working together to really deal with a lot of these quality of life issues that are stemming from growth in our community, right? And growth is not a bad thing. We just have to manage it. And we have to manage it with a sense of urgency and really not begin to process things to death. I, I think a lot of people in this community, certainly I am, and I'm very patient, I'm a bit ready now to kind of vote and make some decisive decision based on data, based on input, based on research. Hopefully, we can do all those things a little bit quicker. Thank you.
Mr. Dreggs.
So I think Mr. Graham was peeking at my notes. My first comment is about safety. You cannot have quality of life in a community where people don't feel safe. And I think we should acknowledge, as you did, homicides are down in the last report I saw from 75 to 54. That's dramatic. That's a big success. I appreciate CNPD's efforts there. What we have seen a lot of is property crime and a kind of a general atmosphere of a breakdown in, in civil order. And this has to do with street racing, panhandling, things like that. So people are uncomfortable, I think. They don't feel safe. And that is a primary concern. And we know from what we've heard from our Chief of Police and the District Attorney, the courts are a revolving door. People are not afraid to commit some felony offenses because they know that the police car is basically a taxi cab that takes them uptown, and then they have to figure out how to get home again. So it's not within our authority to fix that necessarily, but it is well within our responsibility to be mindful of that and to do anything we can about it. I would also mention, safety extends to things like Vision Zero as well, and the priorities that we have for making our roads safer to cut down on accidental deaths. And in that area, my personal view is, we're not investing enough. We have identified needs that we intend to work on. It takes money to fix these things. Crosswalks, sidewalks, lighting, and even things like sorting out sight, sightlines on intersections. There are a lot of intersections where you can't see. And one, in fact, the neighborhood I live, it's a little scary coming out because your lead time after you see a car is a couple of seconds. So I would like to see us invest more. We have children walking on the edge of busy roads on, on the way to a bus stop where there isn't even a platform for them to stand. In some cases, the topography is such that they have to walk on the edge of the road. There isn't extra space. And that is, that is a simple money allocation question. We are not investing enough, in my mind. I do appreciate that many of the things that detract from quality of life are being addressed, and you're doing a great job. I appreciate that. I would mention, aside from panhandling, we've had this conversation about short-term rentals for a long time. And I don't know that we've really solved that. It's tricky because there is a legitimate business there, but there is also corporate and other use of these properties for purposes that create a nuisance and detract from quality of life. So, and I guess the last thing I'll say is code enforcement, in my mind, does a great job. I really appreciate the response I get. If I contact Jane with a constituent issue, wham, right on it. So really appreciate that. The only thing I will mention is I have one neighborhood that's been a problem for years, Park Ridge, where they don't have an HOA. And so one group is constantly complaining to me and to code enforcement about the behavior of another group. And they're basically trying to use the city to impose the will of one group on the other group. I think my only suggestion there would be, should we have some sort of a mediation process? Where code enforcement in a situation like that goes into a conflict and tries to work out some sort of a ceasefire and so on, instead of constantly calling us to issue these citations and then to escalate and, and use our, the tools that we have so far to try to put a stop to problems like that. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Mr. Bakari.
Thank you. Well, first, you guys obviously are a great asset to the city. It's amazing to be able to work with you. And, Mr. Manager, I think there's, we need to kind of bifurcate this conversation. There's the blocking and tackling of some of the more basic quality of life things that are being addressed, that we're working together on a daily basis, not behind the dais, but with the staff, to get done. And can they use more funding? Absolutely. But the team is doing a really good job there. I think the theme here that a lot of us are frustrated by and want action on is, is a more holistic quality of life, not just conversation, but list of actions that we can take in a very near term perspective to make a dent in what our constituents and we as individuals in this community constantly see and are having trouble with. I mean, everything that has just been said, I couldn't agree with more. And what I think we need in this immediate term, because the problem is with government, you know, there's a political feasibility kind of lens and will lens, like, don't worry about deciding what's going to be popular or not. Give us a list of everything. And let us debate it out amongst this group. Because at the end of the day, whether it's people that have sat up here at First Ward, Ward, Fourth Ward, and elsewhere about defecation occurring, the constituent requests and, and problems I receive regularly, in District Six, where you're like, well, that's, that can't be a thing there. It absolutely is a thing there. It's in every corner. It absolutely is a thing there, it's in every corner of this city, the aggressive panhandling on every single intersection. I mean, at some point in time, people are just scratching their heads, like, why aren't you guys doing anything about it? And the reason we're not doing anything about it is because there are these multiple layers of kind of government and bureaucracy, no offense to anyone, but it's like, this is going to be dicey, and this council is going to react badly to that. Don't worry about that. Let us do it. Give us every tool that aligns to those things. Someone was shot, running twice, running four houses down from my house last week, and, and it touches on multiple of these things. There were five shootings over this weekend. And, and I really, like, honestly, I appreciate CNPD, everyone knows how much, I just love them to death, but let's stop talking about, you know, 20 or so Delta decrease in homicides, because we all know that fluctuates year over year, and it's, property crimes up is a leading indicator for us of where all that's going, and the difference between a homicide and a, and a shooting that just missed is an inch. We've learned that over the years. And, and when people are being burglarized, and all this stuff is happening, when we, you know, proactively can get ahead of things like the homeless camp that we experienced a couple of years ago, we can do that now, when it's not here, but we can't do it when it's there. So I would encourage you, step one is to, don't worry about the political ramifications, or what kind of nonsense we're all going to fight about, just give us everything and say, this directly relates to these things that you've heard of. Let us hash that out, and, and at the end of the day, hopefully, step one is, we can adopt some real things. Step two is, we can ensure they're enforced. Step three, we can ensure that the criminal justice system then picks up where that leaves off. And step four, which three and four have to happen simultaneously, those in need of upward mobility, those in need of mental health help, those in need of wraparound services, they can get them. But while they're sitting on our streets, not only is it not good for quality of life for everyone, it's not good for those people. So if, if you can do that, I think we will make a massive step forward. And hearing everyone talk, I was trying to think, where is this stuck? Where's this stuck? That's exactly where it stuck. So if you can do that, that would be a big deal. And you guys just keep being awesome.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for, the team, for what you've put together and what you've been working on. As you can hear from my colleagues, everyone has a personal story that's connected to safety overall in the city, that I think has, is critically important, of course, but not particularly salient to what you've put in front of us in this plan. So there's a call and, and an undercurrent to have a more holistic, safe Charlotte plan that speaks to some of the tenants that my colleagues have just spoken to. But I do have a couple of questions about what you have presented to us in this particular report. First and foremost, I'm very happy to see Mr. Manager, the Rapid Response Team, be stood up. It was something that we talked about, literally this calendar year, put in the budget, and now we're in the hiring process. So that is a quick response, perhaps rapid, that could be a little pun on that, on how you guys have addressed this. But will the, will the Rapid Response Team, will they have the power to write tickets, like parking tickets and other tickets, or will they have to connect, as you had on Slide 9, with some of their counterparts in order to actually take action?
Great question. That's actually one of the even more rapid steps that we took. So the team has the authority, code enforcement now has the authority to issue parking citations. So the manager authorized code enforcement in July to enforce provisions within Chapter 14, which is where all of the parking regulations are, and code enforcement has already started issuing parking citations specific to tractor-trailers. And as we amp up the team and get the technology solutions that allow us, rather, have you, have you seen the, the ticket books with the multiple layers? And you give one to the vehicle, and one goes to the office, and one gets sent here? So what's part of the technology solution we're working on is so that our staff can take the ticket readers out, and, and be more efficient, and be able to scale across the city. But absolutely, that's one of the underlying provisions here, is that the team will be able to issue citations.
Okay, excellent. And I, I think that makes total sense. If you didn't say yes, I was going to recommend that to happen. Not only for the trailer parking, but also, as I've been speaking to Allison and some others and staff, we need a holistic plan around construction parking, and perhaps baking it into our permitting process. But there are some pockets throughout the city where there's high construction, and in particular skyscrapers, you know, multi-level units, and those, those construction sites flare up in the middle of their plan, where they have hundreds and hundreds of people on site. And of course, it scales down, but that's an issue, and I hope that the Rapid Response Team will be tapped into that aspect of construction parking. We've talked already about ticketing just sort of being a cost of doing business, and potentially raising the price of citations. However, I'd like for us to think about having particular thresholds, because there are, it is a cost of doing business, and developers, and truck drivers, and all various different industries bake that into their sort of petty cash flow. But if we had a threshold where if you've had a citation for one act, and you've had that citation three times, or four times, within a six-month period, this is just an example, I haven't thought through the ramifications of all this, perhaps there's something larger that you get a larger penalty, that you will have to occur, and perhaps some court appearances, et cetera. But I think we need thresholds, as other cities throughout the country have, for repeat offenders who are bad actors in this process. The other, the other piece that I hope this Rapid Response Team can help, especially with code enforcement, is the parking on the yards and on the lawns throughout the city. I have several neighborhoods within District 1, just drove past a neighborhood in your district one evening, and it was literally seven cars on a front yard. And so I, I think this Rapid Response Unit can certainly act on that regard. There's a lot of these things that I don't, don't want us to burden CNPD with, because they're down in staff, there's, there's, there's criminal activity and crime of opportunity that they need to be addressing. So I believe that this particular team can help with things like that. But that is something that is occurring throughout the city of Charlotte that we need to enforce. And then lastly, I will just say, you know, we've talked about Keep Charlotte Beautiful, and the bags of litter, litter that's getting picked up, and I actually pay attention to those reports that you guys send out. A lot of bags of litter have been picked up in District 1, year-to-date, for sure. But I would like for us to think about, especially, you have landscape management on this, on Slide 9, how can we extend the actual beautification of some of our neighborhoods with the planting of trees, perhaps in partnership with Tree Charlotte Flowers, but going past the litter, the litter piece into actual beautifications and beautifications of certain public areas throughout the city, and certainly several within District 1. So I look forward to you guys coming back in front of us with an update, but I do want to say thank you for the work that you've done. I can, I can see the difference, and I know by the end of the year, we're going to have even greater progress. So thank you all for your collaboration and effort. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Ms. Wollington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I just have to say, I love the energy around the dais on this conversation. We all know from our constituents that as we grow, particularly coming out of COVID, that we're not slowing down, and a lot of the things that we saw before COVID have been exacerbated by the last several years. So this is a bigger conversation, is a broader conversation about quality of life, not just the current focus areas that you guys are doing an amazing job on, and we thank you for that. But it's about, how do we preserve our overall quality of life, and what we call our competitive advantage here in Charlotte? What kind of city are we known to be? Why do people come to Charlotte? Why do folks want to do business in Charlotte? Why do people stay in Charlotte? And those are the kinds of things that, as we walk up and down our streets, as our visitors come and patron our city, that is really the first impression that they're going to see. And so when we think about going into the policy discussion, I'm so excited that everyone here has such interest in it, because we're going to need all hands on deck. It's not just city council, as many of us have already said, but it's our partners over at the DA, over at the county, even within the school system, our business community, and absolutely our residents. I've had an opportunity to speak with a number of different stakeholders as we think about our city center, because what you've mentioned, many of you, is that what we see in our city center is what we're seeing all over our city. But we also understand that much of our commerce happens within our city center. So we've got to make sure that we focus there, and as we think about policy, that it not only applies to our center city, but it applies and is relevant across the board, across all of our districts. So as we think about going forward, and I'm very, very excited for our Monday meeting, because it will be our first opportunity in our Housing Safety and Community Committee to start talking about some of these things, and these are going to be short-term implementation items, there are going to be some midterm, and then there's going to be some longer-term implementation items. And so what I'd like to do is just provide a little bit of framework for how we're thinking about this, because there's pieces coming from every direction, right? And we want to make sure that we get ourselves, our arms around it, so that what we're doing, everybody is marked to the beat of the same drum, our residents are clear, our business community is clear about the expectation, and where they can plug in, and who's driving the bus at what time, right? So as we think about the different buckets that we have right now, themes that have come up, there are four of them right now. The first one, absolutely being quality of life, which includes housing and homelessness, right? The second one, economic development. We know that there is a linkage between our commercial property, our businesses uptown, our vacant buildings, and crime, and retail, and the opportunity for folks to come uptown and feel safe. So there's a play there that has clear ties to economic development, and how we recruit and retain and build our businesses. The next pillar, if you will, is our public realm, and that really centers around our built environment. Councilmember Esmeralda, you were talking about our sidewalks, and how we're utilizing our sidewalks, and how people are mobilized, are being mobilized on our sidewalks, which leads us into our fourth pillar, which is really around mobility. How are we getting around Vision Zero? Is it safe for people to go from one place or another within our city center and on our broader city streets? So this is how we're thinking about it. Some things are going to be very much city-led, they fall within our jurisdiction, right? Some things we're going to have to work with our partners, like in the county, as we move more into homelessness, and as we work up and down the housing spectrum. We know that United Way is our, our city quarterback for a home for all, so they're going to have a play there. Certainly, our business partners have a play as we think about engaging employees, our property owners uptown, even our universities uptown, and their student communities, and how do we make sure that folks feel safe in that regard? So every, every stakeholder group has a part to play in this, and everyone, and the conversations that I've been having, I'm happy to say, is absolutely understanding of the urgency and ready to be a part of the solution. So that's how we're going to approach this. Again, some things are going to be immediate. There's quick, quick, cheap and easy, as I'll call it, things that we can do to be responsive to some of the immediate needs, but we know that there are, there's interconnectivity, and there are some linkages that we've got to face. So we're going to do our part over at the city, and we know that our partners throughout the community are standing ready, willing, and able to do so. So I would ask you to stay tuned, and please stand by. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
This is, I might be the outlier here, but it's, it's been a bit discouraging to hear this conversation. The idea that my colleagues believe that somehow increasing punitive repercussions to people in our community who are just trying to make it is going to improve the quality of life for others. And as being that priority, that is taking a huge step back, and it is, might sound nice to a few people in our community, but is by no means the solution that so many of you say you wish to figure out. For example, I assure you, people are not defecating or urinating in neighborhoods simply because an ordinance is not, does not have a criminal prosecution
Say that.
associated with it.
I'm sorry.
Shh.
If, if, please.
I assure, I assure you of that. You need to step back and look at the bigger picture. Might it have something to do with the county closing the main library, which has been the epicenter for a community that is extremely fragile, and is utilized as, as a center of, of the community? That's what we should be looking at. Maybe, yes, maybe there are some quick, easy, cheap solutions, like putting public bathrooms in the Uptown area. So those fragile communities that have been made more fragile have facilities to use the bathroom in. So where are they going to use the bathroom? Where, where are they going to use the bathroom? If, if you attach a criminal penalty to it, they're going to go to the detention center? Where are they going to go when they get out? This conversation just doesn't make sense. It's a regression from where we've been going over the past few years, and I encourage you to change the direction of this conversation in committee, and as this progresses on the policy level. Thank you.
All right, so this has been a very good discussion. There are going to be things that are going to be difficult to just accomplish. I'm looking at the manager taking notes, that every council member has a suggestion or more than one, and he's taking those notes. I think our challenge is going to be, not the Rapid Team and the work that you're doing, the challenge is going to be, how do we define what these issues are, and how they're going to impact people, and how, what changes are going to be expected? So I, I would hope that the Housing Committee has a template that could perhaps be something that would be even more successful, as you come out with how you look at this and review it, how do we make sure that people understand the consequences, and how do we actually have a reason and a rationale that we can explain and work through with all of our partners? Because I don't believe that we can do this without the county, and the DA, and CNPD, and the various other communities, because I think we're trying to solve a problem that is across this country. Now, we are Charlotte, and it is part of what we have to grapple with, but sometimes that may push, well, what does it mean for Pineville? Or what will it mean if we put people in other communities without having some solution? So I am really hopeful, Mr. Jones, that you will challenge this dais to participate fully in this process, to actually have the rationale and the issues thoroughly defined. I understand short-term, long-term, I understand also the process that we'll have to go through, but I really believe that we have gotten to the crux of the issue, and it's going to be hard, but that's okay. So thank you, everyone, for the comments, and the suggestions, and the care that you give for this community. Now, I'm going to make-
Madam Mayor, before we lose staff, and why the city manager has created a lot of notes, can I just please add, for staff, let's also look at the consideration of our food delivery drivers, whether that's DoorDash and others, because we have had drivers that have had their vehicles towed when they've gone into a multifamily complex to make a delivery, even if that means the potential, the potential of a permit for the drivers, so that they can make the deliveries as we become a society where we're getting more food, grocery deliveries, so that we're not penalizing them while they're doing their job, so that we take it all into consideration as we continue to grow and move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more item on the manager's report. However, I'm going to say that we're not going to go to do the social districts, because so many of the people that are still in this room, who chose to come down here, came for the issues that we have on the business, on our policy agenda, and I want to, out of respect, be able to have them come in. We have over 30 speakers for the next several items. How many, 20? 20, sorry. I thought that was 30. Oh, that, that was 13, sorry. So we will have those speakers and allow these good folks to go home and watch us continue this discussion on TV. continue this discussion on TV or on the city's YouTube channel. So with that, we are going to go to the first policy meeting, policy agenda, not meeting. This meeting has been policy all day. So we're gonna go to item 15. For item 15, is there a motion? And wait a minute, how many people do we have to speak? We're going to, I'm gonna describe item 15, and then we will have seven speakers. And so the first speaker, Elijah Pittman, and the second speaker, Richmond Nesbit, if you want to take your time to come down. So item 15 is a recommendation to approve $13,194,000 in the Housing Trust Fund allocations for the following affordable housing developments contingent upon their receiving a low-income housing tax credit award from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency where applicable. Arrowood Homes for $2.5 million, Aveline Legacy and Druid Hills Duets, $462,000, Central at Old Concord, $4,200 for 4% deals, Kings on Lamar, $2.4 million for supportive housing in District One, Swan Run Apartments, $2.4 million, naturally occurring affordable housing. And then the last one is Sycamore Station for $1.2 million for 4% housing tax credits. Now, any one of the council members may choose to pull something out for an individual vote, and we'll do that after we hear from our speakers and open the discussion from council. So Mr. Pittman, thank you, Mr. Pittman. We'd like to hear from you. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and City Council. I represent a group of homeowners that is impacted primarily by Letter C, which is the project at 7202 South Boulevard, and we are asking City Council to delay an approval of that, because at this point, we feel that there is a lack of planning for this development. There's been a lack of community hearings. The development lacks parking and planned security. The development is gonna impact traffic patterns in and out of a already congested shopping center, impacting Old Pineville Road, East Arrowood Road, South Boulevard, and England Street. We need to have additional conversations about expansion of the access around those areas. We also need to have conversations around crime and CNPD response times to this area of the 28273 ZIP code. We also have some concerns around the concentration of affordable housing projects in the Arrowood Corridor, as well as the need to create mixed income communities throughout the city. But right now, our big primary focus is, is getting the community together and address affordable housing as a group, and rather than sticking it in anywhere we can find a piece of land, make sure that we put infrastructure in place to support the affordable housing as well. It's a TOD area, so the parking spaces are significantly less than the number of residences, which is going to have a significant impact on surrounding communities, as well as already an overburdened train station that has no parking for commuters as it is. So we're just asking that City Council delay a vote on this until we've had some more community hearings, so that we can make sure the plan is fully implemented in place.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pittman. I should have asked, if you do not have, if you have the actual program or project that you're talking about, if you would tell us that, because we do have from A, B, C, D, E, so we, in the title. So, Mr. Nesbit?
Yes.
All right. Can you tell us which project you're speaking toward?
For, or interested in it, we're dealing with item 15, correct?
Item 15.
Yes, and that involves housing on the east side of town, which, as I just noted myself, within a five-minute walk from that intersection of North Sharon Amity, Milton, and what's the third one? Oh, Harris Boulevard, of course. And a five-minute walk from there, you would encounter over 2,600 low-income or residential homes in apartment complexes and things like that. And this involves adding another 168 units off of Barrington Road, which is right off of Milton, all, once again, five-minute walk from that major intersection where North Sharon Amity ends at Harris Boulevard. And the problem there is that it's just another way of expanding that whole complex of lower-income homes in that area, which is just saturated. If you move that thing out for more than five minutes, now you're talking close to 6,000 units. And a survey was done, somebody else can tell you about it, because it's a part of number 16. And the concern is that East Charlotte is just being dumped on without consideration of the impact on the neighbors and also on the people who will be moving in there, too, when there are other places within Charlotte, close to 20, according to one report that we got, that would like to actually have all this housing, not all, but, you know, spread it around. And so that's my concern, and I appreciate the opportunity to let you know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nesbit.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question before he leaves? I'm still trying to figure out which one of the projects-
I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Heath to tell us each one, because I think sometimes they may not have the number of the, so it is-
Sycamore.
Sycamore Station.
Is Sycamore Station?
Sycamore Station.
Yes.
So, Mr. Heath, if you would tell us each one before, that would be very helpful as they, at the end of the speak, of their speaking, just to make sure. All right, so the next-
Sycamore Station.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Mimi Davis and Mary Ann Stiegel.
I know, but they didn't know that, they did not know that, so I'm gonna let her speak. Go ahead, just. Sycamore Station, um, 15? No, Sycamore Station isn't 15. It's 15.
Good morning or good evening, I'm Mimi Davis, I'm president-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, we got reversed. I'm president of East Charlotte Coalition of Neighborhoods, and I'm here tonight to talk about the Sycamore Station site. We, I'm also a resident of the Grove Park neighborhood, which is very close to the site at Milton and Barrington. I'm speaking today to oppose yet another mass build, the Sycamore Station project, near the Harris-Milton Road intersection. The project isn't on the side of the road that many of you know with the huge complexes, it's on the other side of the road. It's behind trees, it's on a dead-end street, but when they put the 168 units next to another huge project that's 150 units, then we're talking about, if you combine them, you have to kind of extrapolate and think, well, how many people could fit in there without knowing how many people have signed the lease? But it would be logical to assume there would nearly be 1,000 people in this small area on Barringer Road, just off Milton Road. A thousand people with large housing projects directly across the street from them. Add to this a Section 8 apartment complex along Harris, just a few miles away, the 60-unit apartment complex at Rosecroft, which is directly across Harris. It's almost a self-contained town of segregated poverty. The schools involved are Devonshire Elementary, with a 29% proficiency in reading, 49% in math. They'll struggle more with more of the children. The high school is Garringer, which I understand is already in the highest poverty attendance area of any urban high school in the state of North Carolina. How do we close the achievement gap, and how do the schools make test improvements? The city is struggling with upward mobility statistics. Grouping the poor near struggling schools, lack of jobs, lack of transportation is a cause. There are no well-resourced and opportunity-rich areas for them. Very nearby is the infamous VP station. It's nicknamed by police officers because of the many calls for service, mostly loitering and drug-related. The Hickory Grove Police Division responds to these calls, but like many divisions are understaffed, so response time has lengthened. A teenage kid can walk there from these projects, and it would provide some excitement and maybe much else. We understand from the community engagement meeting that there is not to be 24-hour security. We're hoping for at least cameras. But why is such a small area as the one near just this one intersection of these two roads bearing the burden of all these apartments? A young, technically proficient neighbor estimated 1,800 units.
Thank you very much, we appreciate. If you have any additional remarks, please leave them with the city clerk.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Mary Ann Stiegel and Isaac Sonnen. Who else? I'm sorry. Ms. Stiegel.
Okay. We feel that the east side has an overabundance of low-income housing, and, excuse me, this is about the Sycamore Station. And this housing complex will have a great effect on the already overloaded neighborhood, like Mimi has said. The quality of education in the surrounding schools will also be in jeopardy. Our police force has been stretched to its limits, and this will continue to stress our officers located in Hickory Grove Division. Also, we are acutely aware of the shortage of officers already. The crime in the area has basically increased. There's a VP station, it's like in a triangle there between, close to Milton, Sharon Amity and Harris Boulevard. There's shootings, you can buy drugs there at any time. It's a gas station that I don't go to because I'm in fear of going there. So our main concern is safety, quality of life for the residents that spend there a long, long time. And most of the people that's in our community, I myself have lived there for 41 years. So it's like people, we love the community, we love our neighbors, and we just want to keep peace with where we live and have quality of life and be able to feel that we can come and go and not have to worry. This project will, you know, if you approve this, it's gonna bring over, you know, the 2,000 units in a three-mile radius, which you heard Richard talk about. And we just ask that you deeply consider the construction of this complex and how it's gonna affect our neighbors and the families within, and we ask that you please do not approve of this project. And I'd also like to point out that this is also the area where two of our police officers were killed, Sean Clark and Jeffrey Shelton, near this proposed site. So let's keep that in mind when you're doing this vote, please, and thank you for your time.
All right, our next two speakers are Isaac Sonnen and Natalie Sonnen. Are you here? Are they, are you here, the Sonnens? All right, our next speaker is Joy Mayo. Ms. Mayo?
My name is Joy Mayo, and I'm president of the Kings Creek Community off Arrowood and Nations Ford Road. I'm talking about item C, 7202 South Boulevard. So if Arrowood Homes is approved, this will be five affordable housing units developed within a one-mile radius of the intersection of Nations Ford and Arrowood. I'm concerned with the concentration of poverty in this historically underserved black and brown region of the city. While expanding and affordable housing is essential, I question the concentration of so many affordable housing units in one area that already has a lot of large, a large amount of naturally occurring affordable housing. When I've spoken with city representatives and staff, they've explained that, explained that the land is cheap in this area, and they can provide more housing as a result in this area opposed to South End and Ballantyne. I argue the land is cheap in this area because of systemic racism and the underinvestment in the community, which is historically black and brown. Government agencies and nonprofits should invest in other factors that contributed to poverty in the area, like workforce development, rec centers for our young people, and also seniors and anyone in the community, before and after-school programs for youth, as both of the local schools in the area have received Ds and Fs from the state's report card. I implore council to delay the vote on Arrowood Homes and to instead invest in the largely black and Hispanic population in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, I do not have any other speakers-
Motion to approve-
We have, we have, I don't have any, I don't have any additional speakers on item 15, so I'd like to ask council, because there are a number of items that are listed as A, B, C, and go, D, all the way down to E. So the first one is A, and I'm gonna, Mr. Heath, just make sure, are there any questions about item A? Is there a motion to, I'm gonna have questions, so let me have a motion to adopt item A, which are the ones that I just described with the product. Arrowood Homes, Aveline Legacy Duets, Central at Old Concord, Kings on Lamar, Swan Run Apartments, and Sycamore Station.
So moved.
All right, do we have a motion for A? Mr. Mayor Protem has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All right, I want to recognize Ms. Anderson.
Ms. Esmer wanted to go first.
Well, I'll let the district representative go first, because she might address my concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Sean, could you come up, take your mic, please? First, I want to acknowledge the community voicing their concerns about the Sycamore Station project and its connectivity or proximity to other affordable housing projects on this corridor. Sean, we've heard from some residents, potential number of residents being close to 1,000, you heard some numbers thrown out. Can you just sort of give us an overview of, I know we have it in our packet, but perhaps the residents don't have the number of potential residents who would be able to take advantage of Sycamore Station?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Sean Heath, Housing and Neighborhood Services. So this project would be 168 units. 60% of those units would be devoted to households that are in the, at the 60% AMI level, which for a family of four would equate to $60,000. And I think it's always important to reflect on what are the job types that are included in these various household income ranges? Teachers, nurses, administrative assistants, police officers, just to name a few examples that would fit into that, that income range.
Absolutely. And of the 168 units, there are 134 units that would be dedicated to what you're describing as civil servants, workforce housing. So these would be residents who are working, who have an active income and active participants within the city of Charlotte and the community. I will say that there are 34 units as well dedicated to 30% AMI and below.
Correct.
But the vast majority of these units are dedicated to workforce housing. The second piece I'd like to share is, of the 168 units, there are nearly a third of these units, 48 units, there are one-bedroom units that are meant specifically for workforce housing individuals. So the other piece that I think is important, Sean, and, you know, in the develop, in the summary of the project development, you speak about how some of, this particular project connects to our concept of 10-minute neighborhoods, because it's connected to specific retail and other vital infrastructure. Can you speak to as how this project was scored, proximate to other vital elements of a 10-minute neighborhood?
Yes, for most projects that come to us through Housing Trust Fund requests, they would be required to have a locational scoring done. And the locational scoring has been in place for a number of years, and we consider a number of factors. Proximity to amenities, access to jobs that are within a reasonable commuting distance. There's also a consideration of to what degree is a particular location experiencing transformation that could create displacement risk for existing residents. And then there also is a consideration of the current income diversity in a particular area. And, and what you'll find on any given project is, there's a maximum score, but most of the projects that we're supporting with Housing- projects that we're supporting with Housing Trust Fund dollars will score anywhere between 20 to 30 on that particular calculation.
Great. Excellent. Thank you for that. So this particular project is proximate to grocery stores, within walking distance of grocery stores, pharmacies, healthcare services, and banking. And so that's without the use of any particular car or owning a vehicle, holding up our tenants of a 10-minute neighborhood. The, lastly, Sean, I would like for you to talk about, you know, our projects that we approve out of the housing fund. We look at our leverage ratio to, to understand if these projects are highly levered, if, if it's beneficial and a good use of our dollars for the Housing Trust Fund. Can you speak about the leverage ratio of this particular project?
Yes, I can. For this particular project that has a leverage ratio of 1 to 20, which means that for every dollar the city puts into this project, other funders, other investors are putting $20 in. That's an exceptionally strong value proposition for the city of Charlotte. And this project also has a 50-year affordability commitment, which would be a favorable affordability level compared to what we've seen over the last five years.
Okay, great. And then the last question I have for you is, you know, we have concerns overall around displacement and whether some of the projects that we are supporting with our Housing Trust Fund dollars are having intended or unintended consequences as it relates to displacement. Is there any displacement or disruption that is going on relative to the Sycamore Station project?
No, this is phase two of a development, and there's no displacement scenario associated with this project.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Sean. So I, I just want to share with the residents. I understand your consternation around affordable housing and concentration around specific affordable housing units. But this particular project is really focused towards, majority of the units are focused towards workforce development housing. So these are civil servants who work hard and, and serve our city in a variety of different ways and unfortunately don't make a high salary for the work that they've chosen to do. And so this unlocks an opportunity for our teachers and, and, and other civil servants to have access to affordable, quality, safe housing. And this affordability period is a 50-year window, which is a very long affordability period for, for this area. And I have, also I've read lots of the, a few emails that I've received, and I've, I've heard some positives, some positive voices for this project, and of course I've heard some on the, on the negative side. I will say, the conversation around CMS, and we've been having a lot of conversations around CMS throughout our, our meetings over the last several weeks. You know, I have high confidence in our, in the board and our new superintendent, and I know they have a strategic plan to address schools and school performance. And so I don't want to overstep our responsibility of how CMS is planning to ensure that our schools and our students are performing at a proficiency or high proficiency level. But I know that they have a strategic plan that's focused on schools who are underperforming. So I, I'm going to support this project because I think it speaks specifically to our need for affordable housing, for workforce development. These are individuals in our city who work, they're gainfully employed, and they contribute to the city. And I also will continue to work with the neighborhood along the corridor to ensure that as we have new development that comes up, that we're mindful about where particular projects like this and others could be concentrated. Because I do hear from residents, not only in this corridor, but in other pockets of the city, that there is a high concentration of affordable housing projects within certain spaces, right? And so we do need to be mindful as much as our dollars can allow us to, to share and spread out these projects throughout other pockets of the city. Thank you, Sean, for your comments, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Ms. Esmera, and we had Ms. Johnson, we have Mr. Driggs and Ms. Mayfield.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Anderson did a great job laying out all the facts, especially with the income breakdown, and talked about how this is really the workforce housing that we are talking about. So approximately $45,000 to $60,000 per household. Do you know what's the average median income of the area?
I, I do not. I do not.
Okay. I, I think that's also important as you present some of this, because the last data point that I have for the average median income for that area is a lot less than what is required for this housing, to, to live in this. So I know some of the residents have specific concerns around safety. Could you talk about the safety measures that will be in place and address some of their concerns around proximity to the gas station and how, how some of those concerns will be addressed?
Yes, and as it relates to safety for any of the city-supported developments, I mean, there are progression of things that we would expect to see in place. And it really starts with the vetting of prospective tenants and what's done on the front end associated with background checks and credit checks. And once that vetting occurs and residents have moved in, there are a number of things that are done from a physical security perspective. And the developer, I believe the community engagement session was held on August 24th. There were questions that were raised about safety. The developer provided a letter to participants after the session, including the city. And they've made some assertions that there are some things they are exploring and considering, and I'm not going to mention those simply because they're exploring and considering. But I will say that they've made a commitment to additional security cameras above and beyond what they've done in the first phase of the project, and also to expand the hours for the off-duty security personnel that are on site. And it, it would be very unusual. I'm not aware of affordable housing projects that we support that have dedicated 24-hour security support, but this one does have off, off-hour security, and they've agreed to beef up those security measures.
Thank you for addressing that. And I know you mentioned there will be a background check. So if there is, if there is an occupant or tenant that's involved in any crime, do they get evicted right away?
That would really depend on the specifics of the lease for any given household, so I can't comment specifically on that.
Right. So I, I remember when I served on the Charlotte Housing Authority Board, and if there was a crime at the property where tenant was involved in, they took immediate action and that tenant was removed from the property. And I think, I, I would like to get additional information on that. What are some of those measures in place to ensure that we are keeping all the tenants that are living there? To Ms. Anderson's point, these are some of our civil servants that will be occupying this. We are talking about teachers, firefighters, police officers, to ensure that we are keeping all of our residents safe, including our neighbors.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things that, that I heard was there, there are a concentrated amount of affordable housing in a specific area. And one thing I wrote down was concentrated resources. So I, I, I'm of the, the belief that, you know, we hear this term concentrated poverty, but I think that's an opportunity for us to really concentrate on solutions. So is there, this might be an opportunity for a satellite, satellite services or wraparound services to be available and accessible for residents in that area? I know when I've talked to Mr. Proctor in the past, he talked about possible wraparound services at the com, at the complex. It was something he thought of. Do you, is he here, or do you, have you all had discussion about that?
I, I'm not aware that he's here this evening, and he and I have not spoken directly about that.
Okay, okay. Well, even if, we've talked about that in the past, but even if he didn't do it, Ms. Davis talked about 1,000 units, or there being several complexes. Maybe we could partner with the county to be able to provide wraparound services in that area so that we can help break those cycles and, and help folks to be upwardly mobile. I think that's an opportunity for us to, to provide concentrated solutions. You talked about the school and the, and the failing schools and the overcrowding schools, you know, if we could, and I know we don't want to overstep our boundaries. I heard you, Ms. Anderson. However, if we did collaborate with the county and the schools to maybe recognize what the residents are saying, you know, if, if there are a large number of affordable housing in a certain area, and, you know, I'm an affordable housing advocate, and I, and I know folks need a place to live, but we also can address these, the, the concerns by addressing the, the residents from a holistic perspective. So I would, I would like to see concentrated resources, and maybe that's working with the county, and I can reach out to some county commissioners, and see what services or resources we have in those areas. Perhaps satellite offices, and, and just something so that the neighbors feel more secure. I don't know how, how, when we talk about a 10-minute neighborhood, what's included in that area, in that 10-minute neighborhood. But if we had those sources, maybe tutoring, maybe mentorship programs, maybe something to address the, the core issues in that community, I think would be helpful for all parties. Thank you. Oh, last thing, I'm sorry. And then the BP station they talked about. If we can get the statistics for the crime at the BP station, and maybe strengthen the enforcement at that BP station, and really start to look at nuisance laws and, and just address the concerns that the residents have. I don't think the, the residents have a, a problem with affordable housing, but they want to make sure it's managed appropriately. So if we could address those issues and address those concerns by having those resources for, for residents and ensuring the enforcement of, of crime, maybe making sure that, that the lighting around there. If we can do more, if this area feels like they're, they're carrying a burden, more so than other areas, then we should be intentional about the resources and the solutions around that, so that they're not feeling, you know, dumped on, in that area. You know, this is workforce housing, but also those 34 units that are 30% AMI, folks with disability and forced fixed income, you know, they, you know, this is, this will be suitable and affordable for them. This is truly, some of them, units are truly affordable. So we hear you as a council, and I hope that we can address their specific concerns by, by pouring resources in that we have. I, I think that that would be a win-win situation. Thank you.
Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. So two major concerns, concentration and safety, if I tried to summarize. The interesting thing is we used to have a location policy when it came to our investments in affordable housing that designated permissible and impermissible areas, if veterans remember. And the goal was to try to push for a dispersion of that housing around the community. But what we found in time was that the impermissible areas were the ones where there already was a lot of affordable housing. And if you excluded those, you couldn't afford to do development in the other areas. And, and we ended up making one exception after another without any basis, any policy basis. It was just like we were driven by the economics of, of being able to afford to create this housing back to certain areas. So that's when the location policy that Mr. Heath alluded to was adopted that gave us a set, various criteria. But the, the truth is, we're kind of stuck. And I'm the District 7 guy. It's hard to get anything done in my district. It's so expensive. I have managed now to get a few situations approved where developers agreed to include some affordable units, things like that. But that's the problem. That, that's why we are having to look at a proposal like this. Now, the other thing on safety is there is a perception that there is a safety problem. My own impression from 10 years is that that is not actually borne out by data. So from time to time, the subject comes up, and we say, all right, let's not just be emotional about this. Let's see whether there's anything that actually demonstrates that this type of housing brings with it a rise in crime. And Mr. Heath, I don't know whether we have recent research or what that looks like, but in the past, when I've looked into it with the police, they said no. So I'm hopeful that that will not be your experience, because I don't believe it has been. I do have sympathy for not wanting to see one development after another take place in the same part of town. But if we want to do anything, I'm not sure we can avoid that. So that's all I can tell you. I, I intend to support this because I really feel that it serves a public purpose, and even though it does so at a cost, we have to do something in this area. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yeah. People who are desperate because they don't have a place to put their head, because they don't have a home to go to, will do desperate things to get housing or to make themselves safe. So the idea that not building housing will sometimes how correlate, you know, to people acting desperate, as my colleague, Mr. Driggs, just said, the data just completely does not bear that out. And I would encourage us to change that narrative in our community, because honestly it's quite offensive. As, as it relates to Arrowood Road, you have billions of dollars of investment in public transportation that's directly adjacent to, to this. It's in walking distance to amenities like supermarkets, laundromats, other things that folks need. This is an optimal place. Part of the reason why it is cheaper down there is because you have a lot of old industrial land, and that is a place that you want to lock in affordability now, because change is going to eventually come down the South Boulevard corridor or up the South Boulevard corridor, depending on where you're looking at it from. So I hope we get this thing passed quickly. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was staff able to pull up the map? So for, for transparency, the question that I sent to Ms. Marie specifically was, over the last decade, how many multifamily projects have been approved in the identified areas noted tonight? I am concerned that the unintended consequences are re-concentrated poverty in certain districts. Everyone, we all receive a copy of this. Staff was looking to see if they can pull it up. But in the back is a map. This map is the heat map. Here's the map, of which I'm waiting for it to come up so that you and the community can have it. All of council has received it, but it is the map of where these current locations are. We are only having a discussion so far about action item A. That includes Arrowood Homes, Avaline Legacy, Central F.O. Concord, Kings on Lamar, Swan Run, and Sycamore Station. Sycamore Station is in an area that is not overpopulated. That is an area where we have the opportunity for more growth. I need the second map to come up. This right here is the first map that shows you where the locations are. If you look at this map that is up now, that is put up for all of you and for those that are at home. If you had the ability to look at the two maps, you will see that we do have areas of concentration, because we must go back and recognize that we changed our districts a year ago. And when those districts changed, there was a shift. And when that shift happened, that created some challenges. What I am concerned about is that in another decade or so, we are going to see what we saw with Westwood Apartments, what we've saw with South Side, what we've seen with Brookhill, what we've seen with so many. Westwood Apartments are now $400,000 to $600,000, $600,000 homes because the apartments were leveled. But those were apartments that were, at the time, for 30% AMI. That AMI changes over the years. Our AMI, our 80% AMI today is not the same AMI it was. Our AMI, our 80% AMI today is not the same AMI it was at 80% 10 years ago. So, when I look at this map that is currently up, and I look at the map of where these locations are, for me, Sycamore, Swan Run, Swan Run, as well as Mount Mariah Seniors are the ones that are on the outskirts, where there's little concentration. Yet, if we look at where Avaline Legacy, since I don't have a pointer to point it on this big map, Avaline Legacy is in the top of this cluster where we already have a number of workforce projects. Fast forward, we may see a challenge. It is an idea to say we need to add wraparound services. It is because of the lack of those services for decades that got us to where we are. It has taken almost a generation for some to build wealth in their homes. When I purchased my home in 2001 for $70,000, it took me over a decade, two decades, to finally see any equity in my home. So, the idea that we're having this conversation, just looking at the districts and not recognizing that we shifted the districts and we have a clear heat map that shows on this heat map where we have concentrated some developments and not have true diversity with some higher-end projects coming out, that is a challenge. It is a great idea for us to make investments, but we have to recognize, again, today's numbers, we're still using the same crescent and wedge theory, but we moved the crescent and we moved the wedge when we redid the lines for where the districts are. So, it is not the same conversation that it would have been in 2019, much less 2020. When we look at these dots, again, for me, Swan Run, which is down almost to where you see Pineville Matthews Road, go over to the right where you see Matthews is the Mount Mariah Seniors, go up, right past, right up under Old Concord Road, further to the right is where Sycamore Station is. Those developments make sense. But when you start getting, just for A, only looking at A, when we get to Avaline Legacy, the duets, there is a cluster of workforce and lower income where now they're dealing with the impact of a new property tax evaluation that has changed their property. They have equity, great. But $640 is not enough to help them pay that new tax bill that went from 1,000 to over 2,000. I want us to really be as transparent as possible when we are focusing, when we have opportunities for growth and development that we can support, that's not going to put a future council, a decade from now, in the situation that those of us that have been around for more than four terms have already been dealing with on the district level. We've seen it. We've had to fight through it. This for Brook Hill, that was five council members for District 3 that worked on that. It is only when we got to our fifth council member that we finally had the right team come together to help. We can't be the ones around this dais to do the same thing in neighborhoods and for a future council to have to deal with. Sean, you do an amazing job, you and the team. And I recognize that we have some other opportunities that's going to be coming down the pipe. But if we do not take into consideration the overlay of the map, not just this one that says where it's at, but the impact of this one, when we keep approving it, we're setting ourselves up to where we're going to continue to have to rely on government dollars to try to fix something that we probably could have corrected on the front end by even thinking about unintended consequences. The manager, what I've asked, and he's going to bring back to us, I've asked, what is the impact potentially if the city of Charlotte becomes a majority rental city? If our base, if our tax base really comes from our residential, single-family, what is the difference? How much are we getting in taxes from multifamily versus how much are we getting taxes from residential, owner-occupied residential? Because if you're a company and you're renting out a house, you're paying a corporate rate. I'm saying, I don't know what that difference is. But what I know is, our base, the bulk of our funding, comes from taxes and comes from property taxes. What are we doing now that we put individuals in a place where, yeah, you now have equity that is taking you a generation potentially to gain? What is that doing if we do this? If we continue with these particular projects? My colleagues are going to vote how they vote. I am saying, for me, out of A, I can support Swan Run, Sycamore Station, Mount Mariah Seniors, which Mount Mariah is in B. So, out of A, I can support Sycamore Station as well as Swan Run Apartments. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Ms. Watlington did ask me, and I wrote it down, and I just can't see anymore.
No worries, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Watlington.
Yep, just a couple of things as I'm listening to my folks around the dais. There are a couple of things that I think we can do some more work around. I share your concern, Madam Mayfield, about rental versus ownership and the use of our Housing Trust Fund dollars towards rental properties versus investment in owner-occupied dwellings. I think that's citywide. And when we talk about who we want to be and what kind of city and what kind of pride that residents have in their city when they've got an ownership stake, I think that's critical. And so, as we move forward with our public dollars, particularly if we're going to be asking for an increase in Housing Trust Fund dollars, we've got to figure out a way to help folks be owners in our enterprise. So, that is one component of it. For me, I share the sentiments of some of my colleagues that some of the projects are clear, yes, we can go knock these out. I've heard two to three, being Arrowood, Central, and Sycamore, that people have concerns about, have additional questions about, like in regards to the surrounding AMI. And I've heard enough folks galvanize around this idea that we really need wraparound services for a number of these. I'm wondering if the council would be amenable to splitting up the vote on a few of these and then possibly deferring two to three of them for that additional investigation.
I think we have a motion on the floor. I don't know if you're just speaking towards A or all of the remaining ones as well?
I am, I don't know what the letters are in particular.
There are C.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, I'm looking at it here. Okay, I'm just talking about A in this case.
So, I think we have a motion on the floor for approve adoption of A.
And so, I'll offer a substitute motion then to vote, to approve Swan, Mount Mariah, Kings, and Avaline because the bulk of the units are 80% AMI. So, that to me is truly workforce housing.
All right, wait a minute. I want to make sure we have, in the, we have Avaline and Arrowood. And you would like to withdraw?
No, ma'am.
No, that's not what she said.
I'm saying, I would like to, I move to approve the Swan Run, Mount Mariah, the Kings.
I'm on A, and Swan Run is one, but Mount Mariah is not in.
Mount Mariah is in B.
It's not in A. That's what was confusing me. I was trying to figure out where Mount Mariah was. All right, so you're, and...
All right, okay. So, yeah, so I'm saying, approve Avaline, Kings on Lamar, Swan Run.
Avaline, Swan Run.
Kings on Lamar.
Kings on Lamar.
So, my motion is to approve those three and then, and Sycamore, excuse me, and hold the other two, Arrowood and Central, for separate vote.
All right, so we have a motion, we have two motions in accordance to this. So, we have a motion for the Avaline, Kings. This is your substitute motion. Avaline, Kings, Swan, and Sycamore. All right? Are you prepared to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Hold on, I'm just, okay, so...
We have a substitute motion.
Can you please, Dr. Watlington, can you repeat which ones you're not including?
Arrowood and Central for separate vote.
Arrowood and Central would be voted on in another motion.
So, I have a follow-up. So, the public speaker, Ms. Mayo, when she spoke, did she talk about Arrowood Homes? Or did she, because there are two Arrowood Homes. So, I wasn't sure which...
In A, just in A.
It's just the A, just the A item.
I know, but like...
But there is a section, and I think, Ms. Ashmir, if you're right, if you approve Sycamore Station, you have to also approve in B the additional $500,000 for Sycamore. So, I do think that we have to, I mean, I didn't know it was going to be as difficult to pull out the motions. But if, I would have you say that, or I would say that in order to make Sycamore successful, I mean, you have to include the section that's left in B under the federal funds for $500,000 and the 4% low-income housing tax credit. So, this is what I have for the motion. Avaline Legacy Druid Hills duets, Kings on Lamar, Swan Run, Sycamore Station at 1.2 million, and in B, Sycamore Station for 500,000. I think that's the substitute motion, but I want to check with Ms. Watlington if that's what she had, the motion that you're making.
I'm okay to pull B, not C and D. That's not a part of my motion at this time.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I can't hear you.
I said, I'm okay to pull B, but not C and D in my motion at this time, just to be clear.
Wait a minute, I'm not on C and D.
I know, I'm just being clear because I didn't, my motion is for A. But if you want to pull B in, I'm okay with that. I'm just making it clear that C and D is separate.
C and D are separate, but to complete the full funding for Sycamore requires B. At 500,000, which I've included in this substitute motion that you have.
I understand.
Okay, is it okay? I know you can understand, but the question is, are you okay with it? All right, thank you.
And that's the second, I'll accept it.
Sean, I think, and we have a second. Sean?
I just want to make sure everybody understands that the only reason there's an A and a B is because A is local funding, B is federal funding. Some projects are receiving a combination of local and federal funding, so they're listed twice. Mount Mariah is only federal funding, so it's only listed in Action B. Just wanted to clarify that.
Got you, thank you very much. All right, we have a substitute motion on the floor. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the substitute motion, please raise your hands. I have Ms. Mayfield and Ms. Watlington. The motion fails. We're back to now the vote, and I call for the vote on the original motion. All in favor of the original motion of A, including B, for the Sycamore Station? All in favor, please raise your hands.
A is for all of the items.
A?
Yes.
Yes, all of A, including B for the second portion of funding for Sycamore. You have to have both pieces of funding.
But so would B for Arrowood, because Arrowood also has federal components.
Oh, that's right, it does. Arrowood as well.
So, we got to include both, Arrowood and Sycamore.
You got me? Thank you, I appreciate it. So, a motion to include A as well as Arrowood Homes in Section B and Sycamore Station. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven in favor. Any opposed? Two, three opposed. All right, thank you.
Motion to approve B through E.
B through E. We have a motion for B through E. And that would take us to the end of this item before we move on to Freedom Fighting Missionary Housing Support Grants for our next item. All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of items, the remaining item in B as well as C, D, and E, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Anyone opposed? Three opposed, so seven, that passes as well. Now, we are on Item 16, and we have, here we go, you're going to hear. Item 16 is with the, we have 13 speakers for Item 16. And so, we have a motion for Item 16. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve A and B.
We have a motion for A and B, Item 16. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
We have a second for that. So, we will hear from our, we're here, we need to hear from our speakers. So, that's, what are y'all saying down there? I'm not sure. What were you saying?
She has another motion, it might...
She has another motion. I know, but we have to have the speakers first so that we know what they're asking or commenting. So, we're going to first recognize the follow, we can have these two speakers come down, Kenneth Robinson and Rick Shaw. If Mr. Shaw isn't here, is Mrs. Shaw here? Oh, Mr. Shaw, thank you.
Oh, really?
So, I know who you are, Mr.? Could I have your name?
Yes, Rick Shaw.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I had, okay, so, Mr. Robinson.
Real quickly with my two minutes, thank you. I definitely want to give a thank you to Sean Heath and the team at Housing and Neighborhood Services and the city manager for working so hard on this for us. When we first started our organization, and correct, I am Kenny Robinson, founder and executive director of Freedom Fight Missionaries. When we first started our organization and received our first grant, I presented to Cardinal Innovations at the time that if you are black, have a criminal background, and are a Charlotte native, that in fact you have a disability equivalent to a blind man. That still stands right now. It is so difficult to be black and to be from Charlotte and to have a background that many of the people that we are talking about across these issues are the ones that are experiencing homelessness right now in Charlotte. So much so, that I commissioned a report to be done by the Urban Institute in UNC Charlotte because there was no data surrounding this issue of post-incarceration. Some of the data that came out of that report that I am a reviewer on is, black individuals make up 31% of Mecklenburg County population but 76% of the incarcerated population. Black individuals make up 31% of Mecklenburg County population but 77% of the homeless population. We are predominantly talking about black people who are experiencing homelessness. Of the 3,000 black people who are homeless each month in Mecklenburg County, 80% consistently are black. Of that 80%, 85% of them have a criminal background, and that is their barrier to homelessness. I am here in support of the project that we put forth with the understanding that, as you heard, many in the community opposed it and opposed it with great vigor. And we made an agreement to shift some of that funding to make an agreement with the community. And we're talking about a community on the east side of Charlotte that are correcting some of their concerns. And some of their concerns is, why so much affordable housing and not a park? And not place making? And not increased education for the community? So, I'm asking this council to consider extending the corridor as an opportunity to include the area... to include the areas around Milton Road, the areas around East Charlotte. So, this community can get some of the things that they are, that they need there, besides just affordable housing. That was my concession, right? That I was willing to forego a project to create 16 townhouses in hopes that the, the community on the east side can get something more than just affordable housing. It was very difficult for me and my team, we worked very, very hard. Coming from where I come from 10 years ago in federal prison, to be standing here now talking about building housing. Thank you.
Thank you. You spoke earlier and under the name Richard Nesbit?
That's, that's the first, two-thirds of my name.
And so, the second time you gave us the name of Rick Shaw?
Yeah.
So, which name would you like for us to use?
Richard.
Okay, Mr. Nesbit, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I actually will start off and thank you for this opportunity to say that Kenny Robinson is an admirable person. I agree with his sentiments, and there's a definite need. And the bottom line for my position is that we are not ready. The, there are multiple elements of this, although Freedom Fighting. I want to say Ministry, but it's ministries, are doing good things for people, for individuals. They don't have a track record of doing things in an organization of the construction people and the government intermediaries and so forth. So, that's one reason that I don't think they're ready to do this yet. Not to kill it, great idea, we need it, but not now, without some improvements. The other concern for me, because I live in Grove Park, and this is adjacent to the Grove Church, where they want to put in 16 units, is that it's a poor choice. It's a high-crime area, it's a high-traffic area, it's already saturated with public housing all over the place there. Like I said earlier, within five minutes, you can run into close to 1,600 homes. There are better choices, and it would take time and more money maybe, to put them in better places. And actually, what I'm hoping, that the council will see that there is plenty of room for change, and there's no need to rush into this tonight, or even within the next three months. And the community would be glad to help get things done with the city council's approval. So, that's it, do appreciate the opportunity to let you know that we're behind Kenny and FFM, but there's a lot of room for improvement.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, is Emily Shaw, Ms. Shaw, Emily Shaw?
That's her.
I'm sorry, I can't, just come down, and you're our next speaker, followed by Mary English Try. Tree. Mary English Tree. If you would state your name for the record, please. Ms. Shaw?
This way.
Okay, Ms. Shaw?
Sorry, it's Emily Wu.
I'm, I'm.
It's, my husband put me in, my name is Emily Wu.
Okay, Ms. Wu.
Yes, thank you.
Can you spell Wu for us?
W U.
W U, thank you. We get that correct in the record, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Wu.
I'm upset that Kenny pulled a project, okay? Like all large cities, Charlotte need affordable housing, we are in a crisis. The project at Grove Park Presbyterian Church and the Freedom Fighting Missionaries on the service seems like a great idea. The Housing Authority has done a great job on due diligence to approve it. The city council is ready to approve it. However, this project is not only about affordable housing, it is also about the need of getting citizens back to the life they should get. So, the city council need to see what is good for these family. All 16 family in one locations, out of prisons, is not a great idea. We need to wrap our hands around these people, help them out. Let's disperse them within the city, in South Park, in Ballantyne, in places where they could get good job, not just minimum wage jobs, not as a restaurant server or whatever. We need to get them to this, to the area where they could see that they could move forward, not just staying flat. There's a four-lane highway in front of the Grove Church, WT Harris. These family are expected to cross that highway to go, get to the grocery store, to get to the shops, to get to all these things. It's not safe with the children, and I've seen lots of children crossing that highway. The closest place, the BP Station, the famous BP Station, is known for drug dealers, panhandler, aggressive panhandler, and all sorts of unceremonial characters. Talk to our CNPD, because every time they come to our community meeting, that's what they talk about. About these people, they put them in, they, it's a revolving door, they say they could not do anything about it. For low-cost childcare, there's the Boys and Girls Clubs on Milton Road. However, the director there is graciously would tell you that they are so proud that they have third generation, third generations, using that facility. We are not leaving them out of poverty, what are we doing wrong? So, ladies and gentlemen, I need you all to be brave, to be hero. Don't kill this project, give them the money, let's find a way to do it in a good way for the city.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Alright. Our next speaker is Kate Murphy. Are you Ms.? Kay, Kate, I have Kate Murphy?
I'm Mary English Try.
Mary English, I'm sorry, and following, Mary, no, wait a minute.
Mary Wu.
Yeah, she's Mary, Mary English Tree. Please, you're Kate and she's Mary, thank you very much. Alright, so we have the two speakers down here. Sorry, it's a little bit late, and I am, so, alright, our first speaker is Kate, and it's Mary.
Emily.
Emily.
Just tell us your name.
No, I'm not sure.
I mean, I was right, it was Mary.
Yes.
It's messing with you, it's messing with you.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, Mary.
Yes, good evening, members of city council. My name is, in fact, Mary English Try, and I am a resident of Grove Park, here to speak in support of funding the Freedom Fighting Missionaries for their affordable housing development. We purchased our home in Grove Park in 2013. Neither my husband nor I are native charlatians, and we were drawn to Charlotte, and particularly the Grove Park neighborhood because of its diversity. It was important to the two of us to choose to build our family amongst neighbors that represented the entire community of Charlotte. Our home is less than one mile from the Grove Presbyterian Church. While we do not attend the Grove Church, we have enjoyed the opportunity gathering community there after the Fourth of July Parade, participate in their baby music classes, and see the support they provide to the community through their other services, like the Pay What You Can Farmers Market, monthly free meal, and after-school programs. In many ways, the Grove is doing the work that many churches wish they had the ability to support. So, when I heard that they may be involved in supporting an affordable housing opportunity on their property, it came as no surprise. While they are not fully committed at this point, I hope that they, as well as you council members, are not discouraged by some of my neighbors to not support this life-changing opportunity for 16 families. I'd never heard of Freedom Fighting Missionaries until about two weeks ago, when a post was made in my neighborhood Facebook group. I was excited for an opportunity to support affordable housing in my neighborhood, and I started looking into the nonprofit and was immediately intrigued and impressed. They are fighting to help stabilize those individuals that many people in society would prefer to overlook, ignore, and not afford a second chance. But not just individuals, families. While relatively young nonprofit, they've been able to make impact in their short life and develop strong partnerships that support their client's success. During the community meeting they hosted last Thursday, Kenny and his team at Freedom Fighting Missionaries were able to share about their typical clients, as well as some specific client stories. Single moms with kids that are trying to make sure are clothed, fed, bathed, housed, and educated, without having a stable place to live. Kids we know as McKenney Vento students. This 16-unit development would potentially mean removing 32 students from that status, allowing them the stability to better thrive in their school environments, bolstered by the support of the programs at the Grove. While many of my neighbors have voiced concerns about safety or too much affordable housing in East Charlotte, I am not deterred from wanting to see all of our Charlotte neighbors housed and those with children thriving. And I enthusiastically support this partnership and funding opportunity so our community can support these new neighbors as we support each other. This is a type of beloved community I am striving to be a part of by championing projects like this one. I ask that city council support this funding opportunity for Freedom Fighting Missionaries and the 16 families they hope to assist in its initial development, and the many more to benefit for the years to come. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. So, now we can hear from Kate Murphy.
Hi, my name is Kate Murphy, and I serve as the pastor at the Grove Presbyterian Church. When doing the work of equity, there will always be strong opposition, whether you're talking about reconstruction, civil rights, school desegregation, or the work of combating our challenges of affordable housing and economic mobility here in Charlotte. Loud voices for the status quo will always show up to fight to preserve it. To be frank, the status quo approach for me and my role and in my life would be to avoid opportunities like this. And yet, I am, what I'm called to do is stand with those who are marginalized in the face of injustice in the same way that you have been elected to. I would ask you to send a message that bullying to preserve the status quo is not what this council will support, even if it feels convenient right now. And by bullying, I mean, as we heard tonight, describing an affordable housing project as dumping, like the people who would live there and their children are garbage. Like coming in a community meeting and interrupting speakers and saying, "If you build these houses, I will bring a bulldozer and tear them down. I will not be a good neighbor. If I see these children in the streets, I will call the cops on them." Freedom finding missionaries temporarily redirecting funds for supportive services is empowering self-development. But the city council's capitulating to a subset of voices, spreading misinformation, and threatening to call police on people just for trying to improve their lives, that would be tragic. Thank you.
Alright, our next two speakers are Bob Glusencamp and Mary Ann Stiegel. We can't substitute the person.
Should be on the list.
Yeah, Christopher Brown. You're next, I mean, I'm just saying that we, so if you're, if you're saying that you will not come and speak again, Ms. Stiegel, alright, thank you. Alright, so, Mr. Glusencamp, followed by Isaac Sonnen. Is Isaac Sonnen here? Is Mr. Sonnen here? I believe they weren't here for the earlier item as well. So, then after Mr. Glusencamp is Christopher Brown. Okay, thank you, Mr.
My name is Bob Glusencamp, I'm a member of the Grove Presbyterian Church. Thank you for identifying affordable housing as a major need in our city. We know all of our residents are safer and can flourish when returning citizens and criminal justice-involved citizens have the support as they work to rebuild their lives post-return. Freedom Fighting Missionaries is providing that critical support. This is a small, 16-unit townhome project, a proposed public-private, nonprofit, face-based partnership that seeks to partner with the city in supporting the stated goals of the mayor and city council, especially at a time when land is scarce and expensive. Rescinding the funding for this project sends the message to other nonprofits and churches in the city that the city will work against their efforts to provide affordable housing and discourage the kind of innovative and creative partnerships we need to create a community where all citizens can flourish. Most importantly, we'd lose the opportunity to house 16 families. These mothers and their children will have to continue to hide in shadows, live in their cars, hide in storage units, institutionally in shelters if they can find a place, or unstablely every night in different places. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, please.
Thank you, thank you. I think we all have a lot more in common about this than a lot of the arguments and back and forth that went on last week, as well as today. I think everybody in this room would agree that the most important thing for each of us is their family. And from what I heard from, you know, within this hour, the safety of their children. I don't agree with things being sprung up on you without a plan, and a definitive plan with metrics backing that plan, with information around, if this happens, then this will happen. I agree with Mr. Robinson's efforts. I think he's got a wonderful heart, he's a hell of a salesman, he's really good at his job. And I've got background in the same type of, you know, people he's trying to get housing for here, so I get it. But I just can't sign off on not knowing who my neighbor is going to be. The plan for. Let me speak. The plan for defining who will live here is not outlined. There is no third-party management company hired. The church has not signed the agreement for the land over yet, nor has it gone to vote at the congregation. They can't tell me that a murderer won't be one of these people living here. I know that 90% of his target is women with children, and I have no problem with that. But he can't guarantee me that my child is going to be safe as she walks across the same land and go play in the playground. And I need to be able to trust that she will be. I'm going to quote some things that I learned tonight. "If you don't feel safe in your neighborhood, if you don't feel safe, you're not safe," from Mr. Graham. "You cannot have a quality of life in the community where you live if you don't feel safe," Mr. Driggs. We need a list of actions that we can take, and I view this, Mr. Bakari, as a risk-based approach that you're attempting to get, to identify the risk in order to you can best handle the top-down, which completely represents exactly what Ms. Mayfield represented. Even with the simple car analogy you have, if a car doesn't fall off the side of the road, you're making a risk-based approach to make sure that there's no information there. No accidents or people hurt by that, by their accident. Simple risk-based decisions, which we will not have the data to back up here, because this is the very first time that this type of project with this type of funding has been established within North Carolina. One of Mr. Robinson's point-of-orders, you know, primary points from last week, and it's great, but on the flip side, we don't know the answer to if something goes bad. We can't say, we can't compare it to people that are just low-income housing. These are people with the background in doing criminal activity. And you can't guarantee me or tell me, here's the plan for who's going to be in here, and can we trust them or not? And I don't think that's hard to ask. I don't think it's too much to ask who's going to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker is Maureen Glesky and Ashley Schreider. Ashley, is Ashley? And then our last speaker, the evening, will be Jennifer Valmar. Alright, thank you for being here this afternoon. So, we'll start with Ms. Glesky.
Thank you, Mayor Lyles, and thank you, council members. It's true that East Charlotte is the host of many affordable housing projects. However, over the past decade, I've learned that supported housing, affordable housing, is preferred to unsupported. Our schools and businesses, and subsequently, the residents who live here, are the most impacted by concentrations of poverty. As council representatives, you should be willing to ensure the best outcomes, not just a data point of units approved. You should not ignore the health of the greater community impacted by the concentration of affordable housing. Imagine standing in front of a class of. Imagine standing in front of a class of 30 students from underserved community with... You have to attain scores and you have very few resources. You should not be dishing to the county board of education and commissioners without a wide-eyed plan of intensive support required. Communities do not like surprises that are perceived as threats to their stability. A community meeting before an affordable... Not approved, an affordable housing project appears on a council agenda is the best first step. Transparent community communication at the start is the best policy. I urge you to work on a policy that would change the lack of transparency we now have so the community and project stakeholders can work through the relationship. Please do not leave communities on their own to write the unintended consequences your decisions leave behind. We have an army of volunteers, but we need your help. Our volunteers and teachers are burning out. I also urge you to collaborate with the county to be an ongoing supportive partner with financial and human resources is the only way we can have a win for the community and those needing housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So our next speaker, please, would you go ahead and begin?
Hi, my name is Ashley Schreiber, and I am formerly incarcerated. Early on in 2020, I was one of Freedom Fighting Missionaries' first clients. I was released when COVID had shut down most of the world, and I knew that I needed reentry services upon my release. I used Google as a tool to try to find someone who could help me, and everyone was shut down. Goodwill, all of the well-known reentry services, they were all shut down. But Kenny Robinson came to my sister's house, met me in his car, served me, asked me what I needed, helped me with everything along the way. And I don't mean just right then. He has mentored me for the last three years. I came to a point when I wanted something more in my life than what I had. I was working a basic job in fast food and restaurants, and I decided to go to school for peer support specialist. And now, in full circle, I am an employee. I was the sixth employee for Freedom Fighting Missionaries, and I now work with clients. I see on a regular basis the need for services for the minority population, for the Black and Brown people, how they are singled out. I am at an advantage. I had a place to go. The number-one reason that people return to prison is because they don't have housing. That is the number-one reason. And people can come out and have support, they can do well. And so I'm just here standing strong and standing firm that this is a great idea, and I ask that you support.
Thank you very much. Valmar?
Hi, good evening. First, I want to say that I was really disappointed that we didn't even have a moment to remember Keith Lamont Scott this week. This is the anniversary of the Keith Lamont Scott uprising in Charlotte, and we didn't acknowledge that. But the second thing I want to talk about is this group of folks that are opposing this. As a white woman, I want to say that I was disappointed. The only people opposing this are white people in this neighborhood. I'm not saying there's no Black people. The majority and the loudest are the white people. And that should be a red flag. That should be an indicator to us that it's probably a good thing, and it's probably going to have a positive impact on people in the Black community. As somebody mentioned earlier, we have right now, we have three mothers with children living in storage spaces. I have a half a dozen families living in cars. I'm glad we have someplace to park the trucks. I wish we had someplace for them to go that was safely. We have nowhere for people who live out of their cars to go. Yes. I'm just so upset and deeply ashamed that it's my own people that are doing this, that don't want the change, that don't want anybody different in their neighborhood. I had somebody in the lobby call Kenny an ex-con supervising criminals. I had the man sitting behind me just a little while ago threaten to punch me in the head because I said that it was racist, what they were saying. This is racism, straight up. I felt like when I went to the community meeting, we were at a Klan meeting with no Y'all support, please.
All right. So we have... Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Now it's open for the council's discussion. I hope that you will appreciate their courtesy for you and give them that same courtesy as they speak. We'll start with Ms. Molina, followed by Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As many of the community members on both sides said, we had a meeting this past Thursday at our New Waves of Joy Baptist Church, who was gracious enough to share their space with us so that we can conduct this meeting. There was a large amount of passion in that room on both sides from community members. And as the person that represents the east side, I think it's my job to listen to both sides, and that's exactly what we did. I want to stress that, first of all, Pastor Kate, I think she is a courageous woman of God. And I, you know, I think the people who, you know, attend church with you and serve God with you have a leader parallel to something that I haven't seen my entire time in Charlotte. So I would love to just tell you, congratulations on your courage, your commitment to God and His purpose for us on this planet, and that you continue to fight that fight because it's an important one. There are, you know, humans that we serve, but for them seeing someone like you stand up and stand in the gap and be courageous, they wouldn't find that belief and know that God is real. And that's not to offend anyone, but as a Christian woman, I was very heartened the moment I heard her speak. And just to continue to hear her outside and out front and be willing to not only, you know, stand behind a mission that is the first of its kind, but then to put God first and say, "We're going to offer our space to be a part of the solution," and that's courageous. And I would love to see more spiritual communities and religious leaders do the exact same thing. We all have something to offer our community to make it a better place. And I just, I can't speak highly enough. I think you're a courageous example. I've had a lot of conversations with the community members, and I want to let you all know that I hear you. Most importantly, I think I'd be remiss without saying, the most important conversation that I've had over this weekend is one with Kenny Robinson. And I want to let my colleagues know, they were gracious enough to extend me more time to hold this community meeting, and I've reported back to many of you individually to tell you what the outcomes of that. So I appreciate your support in allowing me to go to the community to gather that information so that we can make a great decision. Through no influence of mine, and I just want to make sure that we're still clear, Kenny decided, and he gave me a great example, that really it awakened me. Because of course, I don't work in this specific area of our community to provide resources for our community members, but he said to me, he said, "Marjorie, I feel like that it's dangerous for me to put the people I serve there and then someone weaponize the police against them." And when he said that to me, it almost broke my heart because I was like, you know, because I hadn't even looked at it from that point before he said that to me. And when he said that to me, he also gave me that he wouldn't, he doesn't want to move forward specifically at The Grove Church for that reason. He said, you know, that we can still continue to identify places where he can still serve the population that he serves. And he wanted to iterate to me that he's still going to be committed to the mission of service to, you know, our community members that have been formerly incarcerated. So what I'm moving to do is to, you know, to have us still provide that $2 million in support to Freedom Fighting Missionaries, understanding that they do not wish to move forward specifically at The Grove Park Church. And we've identified another particular place that they can actually pursue to, you know, provide that housing resource. And I'm looking at you, Kenny. Am I right? Am I representing your words correctly? Okay. So, you know, conveying that information, I just want to make sure that I'm specific in saying to the community members that are both for and against, this is something where you've been heard. And the leader of Freedom Fighting Missionaries, on his very own accord, has decided that, based on the people he serves and the needs and the delicacy of the specific and the needs of the people that he serves, that that particular spot is not where he'd like to move this mission forward. So I feel comfortable asking my colleagues to join me in still providing that resource to him so that he can continue that mission, you know, that he can, you know, financially support the wraparound services and that we can pursue another location to move forward for the housing portion of it as well.
Second. So we have a motion, and I think we had a motion from Mayor Protem, and there was a second, I thought, from Ms. Molina. All right. So...
An amendment.
I was a substitute.
Yeah. So, and I just want to make sure, Sean, can I ask, Sean? Because of the language of it, I don't know if we need... I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I don't want to cut you off.
I don't think that it did not...
Yeah, we don't need a substitute, right?
No, we do not need a substitute.
Yeah, we don't need a substitute.
We do not need a substitute.
Yes, okay, we're good. But I just wanted to be specific and speak on the record to say that that's what the leader Kenny has decided, and I am asking my colleagues to support and move forward with supporting him financially so that he can continue his efforts and his mission.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and I believe that... Did I have Ms. Mayfield? Did you have any... Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson. Here we go. I'm not asking for the motion. I thought Ms. Johnson was asking to speak.
No, Madam Mayor, my apologies. When I raised my hand, it was in regards to, I thought we were making amendment motion, but we're just approving A and B.
Right, A and B.
So I did not have a question.
All right, Ms. Johnson, then followed by Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then Mr. Graham, and then Ms. Watlington, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you say Mr. Graham? Okay, after me, thank you. So many of you know that I have an organization, Triumph Services, where I provide peer support services. So I work in the behavioral health industry. I have a niche for working with clients with brain injury, which is very, very, very prevalent in homelessness and also incarceration. I also have a reentry house. I've been in the reentry industry since 2009, but in housing since 2013. I've worked with Kenny Robinson. I've called him for men who come home from prison, and he walks his talk. I'm so honored to support you. I'm honored to support you as a grassroots organization that I've been fighting for for four years, and I'm honored that you have a seat at the table. I'm honored to support you as a man with integrity, lived experience. And so to make this concession for the benefit of your, those you serve, is very, very commendable. Not only do you have the leadership, but you have that lived experience that make you extraordinary in the work that you do. So I'm looking forward to supporting you. The supportive services piece is huge. It's huge for this population. It's huge for the organizations that do work in this industry, because we know that we can call Kenny, and he's going to come over, and he's helped clients bring them coats, bring them underwear, get their ID, whatever it is they need. Because we take for granted, you know, some of the basic services that we have that someone coming home from prison is just not able to do. So thank you for the work that you do. I applaud you, and I'm honored to support you. I think this is very important. Thank you, Pastor Kate, for the work and your courage. And I just look forward to continuing to serve you. This is huge for us as a council to support a grassroots organization. So if you're making that shift for supportive services, that is equally important for this... Well, it's important as well for this population. Mr. Jones, I've asked you numerous times, I want to say it again, I hope we can have a reentry simulation for this city staff and police officers. It's so important to give you a glimpse into what the challenges and the barriers that people face. For Kenny to say that 85% of those who are homeless on our streets have a criminal background, we know that there's a problem. As I said, this is the population I work with. I serve on the CLC and the Reentry Housing Alliance. So the work he does is so important. He's serving those that are the hardest to serve. So I just, I want to say again publicly, I'm honored to support this motion. If you, if your leadership, if you want to make that concession for the supportive services, we know the work that you're going to do and the lives that you're going to touch. So I look forward to supporting you. Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was quoted earlier, and I stand by that quote, that that quote resides in perception, not reality, right? Because crime is down, and people are afraid of perception, and when the reality says something else. If we're going to do affordable housing in this community, we need to have a continuum of affordable housing for everybody. And it shouldn't be redlined out of certain districts.
That's right.
Right? And we all are one community. We all have different circumstances, and we all have the ability to live in our reality. And the reality is that people need help. The reality is Freedom Fighting Ministry has been providing help for people. And the reality is that I'm very supportive of this action item and supportive of the district rep and her comments. Charlotte has always been and will continue to be a welcoming city in all of its communities. And the concession that he's making is an unfortunate one, right? He shouldn't have to. But that demonstrates a certain level of integrity and the willingness to focus on getting the job done and protecting those he wants to serve. So my hat is off to you for your willingness to do that. My hat's off to members of the community for being welcome. Not everybody's joined the line in the sand. There are others that spoke tonight, are saying that they welcome you and the service that you provide and the people that you're trying to help change their lives around. And so I just hope that when we talk about housing for the community, that we're talking about those who need sheltered housing. We need SRO housing, single occupancy housing. We need housing for people that are formerly incarcerated. We need a wide variety of housing throughout the city. And working with an organization like FFM, who can provide those resources to people and understand where they're at, but more importantly, where they need to go, and providing a hand along the way is really commendable. And of the... And if the city can provide a hand as well to ensure that we provide safe, affordable housing for a group of population that needs a helping hand, then I'm willing to support yes for that. Thank you, good luck.
Ms. Watlington?
I'll pass.
She passed.
Okay. Ms. Eschmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, what I wanted to say is, it's sad. I do agree with Councilmember Graham that as a council, we do need to seriously consider continuing affordable housing in all parts of our city. I certainly appreciate the work that many of our nonprofits do. And I know some of our East Side speakers said how you are an admirable leader and they admire the work that you do. I've seen you in action, Kenny, and I appreciate, and I'll be supporting this. And just know that you have the support from the community and the council to continuing to support the most vulnerable members of our community.
All right. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I want to say that as we continue to try and be innovative and strategic about addressing our lack of housing stock that's more affordable, the opportunity to partner with faith-based organizations to utilize the land that they own to bring on more affordable housing in a variety of different forms is a great way for us to connect and from a public, private, nonprofit perspective partner. And this project actually could have been the beginnings of a rubric and a model for how we could get it right in one community connected with a well-established faith-based organization and then begin to replicate it as the community, as communities throughout the City of Charlotte see fit. So I'm somewhat disappointed in this because I think it was an opportunity to actually innovate in a way that we could have built upon over the next 12 to 24 months. And I hope that Mr. Robinson is not discouraged by this pivot and hoping that potentially another faith-based organization could step up and connect and collaborate with the Freedom Fighting Missionaries the way that Grove Park was intending to do. Because I think there is a lot of goodness in getting this framework and model right so we could scale with partners like Kenny. So I will, of course, be supporting this substitute motion with, that Ms. Molina has brought on board.
A substitute?
Oh, sorry, not a substitute motion, but I will be supporting this motion and hoping that we see good things from what Mr. Robinson stands up along with his organization so it can be a model for us in the near future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you. You know, I wasn't happy a couple weeks ago when we delayed this vote. And I'm still not happy at this point in time, but I'm appreciative. Because we have folks in our community that were willing to come out and speak their voice. And there's value in that, even if it's disgusting. You know, these folks, as some came up here and talked today, they don't have time for us to go down your checklist. I started this meeting by reading a proclamation, a joint proclamation about suicide. And these people that Mr. Robinson and Freedom Fighting Missionaries are trying to serve are on the edge. They're on the edge. They don't have time. You don't get to go to Zillow and see who your neighbors are and get an account of who your neighbors are. You get a Realtor to find you a home. They can't tell you the background of your neighbors. It's ridiculous. Some of what I heard was said at this meeting and some of the things that I heard tonight prove to me that the past is still the present in this city. Who are these people? Who are these people that you're afraid to live across the street from? These folks are in this room right now, yes. These folks are your bus drivers. They pick up your trash. One of those folks is going to be a city council member sitting here in December.
Come on, come on.
And you're saying that you wouldn't want her to live by you? Now it's right in this country, the 13th Amendment does allow these folks to be discriminated against. And it's disgusting. Something that we shouldn't perpetuate, and it's not something that we have to stand Luckily, the future is also the present with folks like Freedom Fighting Missionaries, Kenny Robinson, and the folks in this gallery. We need to do this, and we need to do this again and again and again and again. Those folks have jobs. Those folks have support. But they get discriminated against when they try to find housing. It's simple as that. We shouldn't, I hope, we nip this in the bud, I hope this is successful. It is sad that we had a faith community that was willing to provide their land and provide a door, a seat at their table, and that we have to find a different place that might not be as optimal for a community in need, and we're just going to have to accept it. But I guess that's what compromise is. I know Mr. Robinson will keep pushing. I know Freedom Fighting Missionaries and the community that surrounds them will keep pushing. I'll keep pushing, and I hope this city council keeps pushing. Thank you very much.
Okay. It is now time for the council to make this decision. All in favor of the motion as stated in the agenda, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you for the time that you give, the service that you provide. Thank you very much. Thank you. I think they just turned off the mic, so maybe it's a little bit late. But we still have a couple more things to do. The next item is to item 17. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the restrictive covenants on properties located at 10742 Starwood Avenue? Modify the type of permissible affordable units to include townhouses, increase the required number of affordable units from one to two, extend the timeframe for completion of development of the affordable units, and authorize the manager to not execute all documents necessary. Have a motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Thank you. The next item is a, is there a motion for item 18 to adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the issuance of refunding arena certificates of participation series 2003F and 20013G up to $100 million in calling for execution and delivery of various documents necessary to complete the financing and adopt a budget ordinance appropriating the same amount and bond proceeds to the Tourism Debt Service Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? We have one opposed, Mr. Bakari. I'm sorry, we just, raising hands, low hand raise. All right, so I believe.
I know, we had no.
I have so many whispers in my ear. I just need every one of them, I guess. All right, so now I'm going to ask the city attorney to read a motion so that we can make go into closed session. And for those of you still in the room, we will conclude after our closed session with a motion to adjourn this meeting. Okay? All right, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now I feel like I've lost it.
Okay, well, you can find it. We'll still be in session. We'll go ahead and have.
So we're not doing the property transactions since we're going to go into closed session?
No, we didn't have to do those.
It was part of the consent.
It was in the consent and the clerk.
31 through 36 property transactions?
It was included, the clerk included in that, yes. Then, did you have a question about any of them? Okay, so, Mr. Baker, the motion, please?
I have a motion to go into closed session to consult with the city attorney in the matter of Greeley versus City of Charlotte pursuant to NCGS 143, 31811A3.
So moved. You have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a break for?
Yes.
All right, can we do a five-minute break and then conclude?